Good evening. My watch says it's 6 o'clock. That says it's almost 6 o'clock. My computer says it's 6:02. Whatever. It is Thursday, October 27th, 2022, and I am calling the Select Board meeting to order.
It is 6:03 on 10/27, and I'm calling the Finance Committee to order.
To clarify, this meeting is being... People are able to Zoom in via Zoom, and it's also being recorded for the streaming now and for broadcast later. So tonight, we're here as a Finance Committee and a Select Board to review the articles on the warrant for our special town meeting. The date is November 17th, 2022. We have 28 articles to go through, and I think we can just proceed with Article 1 unless there's any questions on the floor before that.
It's Leah. Can you hear me?
Hi, Leah.
Hi. I'll be right there, but I have a quick question. Has there been any update on free cash certification? Or even like ballpark number that we're looking at?
We have a very conservative figure, Leah. Yes, we have a conservative figure. We're putting on the top of the book now $500,000.
Thank you.
Do you know when it was submitted, Gary? Gary?
Excuse me?
Do you know when it was submitted?
It's being submitted prior to the first. So I talked to Jean today, there's Roland Becky, and Dan as well. So finishing it up this weekend.
Okay. All right. All right, so I don't... I'd like us to take turns of requid to the best of our ability to read these articles, or it's... I'm going to be star crazy at the end. Article 1 is sponsored by the Finance Committee, is to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of the certified free cash to the town's stabilization fund, or to take any action in relation thereto.
No.
This is going to call for a majority vote.
I make a motion to place Article 1.
Is there any discussion from the Select Board? We need a roll call vote because Leah is still...
Rock, paper, scissors.
Nickel's eye?
Yeah, binoy.
Leah?
White man eye.
And binoy eye.
Want me to read one?
Yeah, please.
See if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
Take a motion, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the Select Board? Roll call?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Nickel's eye?
Galvin eye.
White man eye.
And binoy eye.
You guys going to have copies, right?
No.
Okay, all right.
I'm just reading it off.
That was... That was a great move. Don't break a copy. I don't have a copy.
We've got an old copy.
Article 3 is sponsored by the Finance Committee, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's O-P-E-D-B, excuse me, trust fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
Motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion from the Select Board? Roll call?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Nickel's eye?
Galvin eye.
White man eye.
And binoy eye.
Article... You want me to read Article 4?
Yeah, go ahead.
Article 4. Sponsored by the Treasurer Collector and Town Administrator, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash of sum of $26,600, and to transfer a sum of $15,557 from account number 0011225150000 to the accounts specified on the handout for the purpose of funding step increases and minimum wages adjustments for non-union, non-contracted employees effective January 1st, 2023, according to non-union compensation wages matrix scaled in response to the increase in minimum wages to $15 per hour, or take any action in relation thereto.
Make a motion, please.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Discussion.
I have...
Yep.
I have a couple of questions.
Perfect.
First of all, for the... This is just a minor semantics thing. I don't think we typically have staff responsible for sponsoring articles. I think it's usually one of the boards or commissions, like board or... In this case, I would think it would be SLEC board, but I don't... Maybe Karen, can you speak a little bit more to that? I'm not 100% sure if... I just don't remember, you know, like anything that comes to the planning office is through Planning Board, and anything that comes through, like the Ad hoc Fire Law Subcommittee is Ad hoc Fire Law Subcommittee, not like Town Clerk's Office or anything like that. Also, I just wanted to make sure that this is... That there's plans to fully fund these increases, or that we as a board are committed to making sure that this is a sustainable increase. We have to address the minimum wage increase no matter what, but just on that piece.
So through the chair?
Yes.
So Leah, are you saying that we shouldn't accept any of the other departments, like Fire Department or DPW, or... Because I mean, the treasurer is a department, so I'm not quite sure what your point is.
No, I just... And I guess I'll have to go back and look. Maybe it's just because I'm not accustomed to seeing, like, any... I thought in the past anything that had come through, like Town Administrator, SLEC board office, was sponsored by SLEC board. If... It doesn't matter. I mean, like I said, that piece is semantics. It's not like here nor there. I just wasn't sure how...
Because this one is...
It's your point. I guess...
Right.
I guess you are correct that Police Department and Fire Department makes the requests, but I don't remember... I honestly don't remember if they are the ones that are doing the, like, sponsoring of the article, or if they're just the ones that are making the request.
Hi, guys. It's Tamika. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So I used past warrants as my kind of template when I started this process, and it was not just limited to boards and commissions. There were departments that were listed on there, such as, you know, DPW. And I will say that this was reviewed by Attorney Jenkins, and there was no issue brought up as far as the sponsorship goes.
It's a budgetary one, so as far as I'm concerned, I think it should be the Finance Committee, because by placing this, it will create a budgetary issue.
But what is the difference between that budgetary issue and a DPW?
There is nothing that's going to hit the budget that I've seen for the DPW. It's all free cash. That's not going to create any differences in the budget for next year. This is going to create a shortfall of $82,000.
It doesn't make any difference what it says on the responses. It's if you vote to place it on the warrant, it's on the warrant. That's what counts. Nothing else.
Okay. Does it... Leah thinks... Leah brought it up. She thinks it's semantics. KP Law hasn't said anything about it. I think, you know, overall, the Finance Committee has all say, whether it's reallocation or anything. So I think it would be nice for the town to know that the town Treasurer and Collector and Town Administrator's offices have looked at these and worked on it. I mean, if there's... If it says Finance Committee, which I'm fine with, it would just... It would be nice to give recognition.
Chair, I have a question. So is the Finance Committee voting on any articles tonight? Not even your own?
Replacing them.
No, this is just a placement.
Not even support? I know in the past, we have done support.
We haven't done that. We've done that. We did that once, and then after that, we've always had time to go back and check and see. Because right now, we have...
I have my question too.
We have some...
How is it a joint meeting, you guys really? Are you guys...
It's for us to ask any questions as to why you're posting, why you're placing, and all those kinds of questions, because chances are, when we have our meeting, we don't have as much information typically.
So I have a couple of questions. So this is $42,157 for six months. So if you... In just... If we stay where we're at with numbers for the next year, then we're talking about $84,000 that we've got to find somewhere when this becomes... As I read this, and I'm reading it again here now, are there... Is there backup information to how you got to all these numbers? And I understand it's reading... What I'm saying, which position that's going to change in... I understand this is the layout as far as the numbers go, but what I'm saying, of the place... Of the ones that you... Of the positions that you're going to do, is there any backup information? How are all those laid out?
Tom, if I may, I did send out all that information to the board.
I have to print it out, because it changes so often. I don't... Paper budget is kind of gone out the window, and the toner budget. Okay. All right.
We get those five minutes in the chair.
Please.
Tom, try to answer your question. This was obviously, as everyone knows by reading the article, effective January 1st, the minimum wage goes up to $15. So we have to... So this article appears for a six-month period of the amount you said minus the line item of $15,557 that was approved that last year's special. So that brings that 42 and change down to 26. And you're absolutely correct. It will bring FY '24's wage matrix for all those employees and OAD classification up to roughly $80,000 for FY '24. The thing here, Tommy, is we had to adjust the whole matrix, because $15 is now going to be the minimum. If we left, didn't touch any of the other steps, step 1 would now be higher than step 2. So we had to adjust every step accordingly by 4.25. So this is not... This is not meant in any way... You know, we've been working on this for years. This is not meant in any way to be a reward, a bonus. This is meant to be something that these people have earned. Certainly, to me, the backbone, and as well as the frontline of any department, I think without them, we would be lost. So I'm strongly recommending. I mean, we even found out... Everybody knows what's going on every day with the cost of living, but we've also found out that the health insurance is going to rise 10% for FY '24. So we keep getting these increases for... The employees are responsible to pay, yet they're not being compensated. The union, we've successfully negotiated three union contracts. They get their steps every year, and the OAD classification or support staff haven't, and they haven't for quite some time. They haven't really gotten steps since, I'll say, since I was here last. So I'm certainly hoping for your support. I know you all understand it. I know you see it. If we have to make adjustments for FY '24, then we'll certainly have to do that. I have discussed with the board, alternative methods of doing that, whether it's the use of, if needed, as I met with Karen, if needed, if we have to tap into ARPA to support this for FY '24, if we have to reduce some of our line items for FY '24, but I think this is a very important step for a very important staff.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just trying to explain a little bit more than what it actually said in the article. I've said it a number of times that we've said it as a committee, how much the non-union people seem to be going back a notch all the time. But my only concern... Not... I shouldn't say my... I'm just looking for information, number one, but I guess one of the things that I was wanting to look at too was in the individual job positions, is that we... Are the ones that are already... And again, we... I know I've been through a number of these wage scales and wage adjustments and studies to classify positions, and we always seem to have several positions that are way off that top end all the time. Are those going to be either further off the top end of the wage scales, or are they going to be in the scale itself?
Tom, virtually every employee OAD will be within the wage scale. Nobody's going to be off the top end of the wage scale.
Okay.
Where someone deserves a... Deserves and earns a step, if you will, that's included in the spreadsheet.
And I'm not saying they don't deserve the step, and I agree with the cost of living. I'm just... Okay, all right.
This isn't even addressing the cost of living. This is just addressing a...
Just the price of fuel. The average price of fuel has increased of 40%. I'm not going to fire on that. Becky, you have a question to the chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that it... Gary said the OADs, but this also includes a step for the MTP classifications, because they have not gotten steps as well. So that we restructured the OAD matrix based on the $15 minimum wage, but we also... This includes steps for... Because the non-union MTP employees and non-union OAD employees have not received steps in quite a few years. Just cost of living. And I do have the detail, Tom, if you wanted to see positions with the exact last three years of raise.
So is the question... We... How are we going to fund this? I don't know how we're going to find it, but I think that we need to... We need to do it. I know that Leah and I... Can you come in?
Yes.
Leah? Come to the table.
Do you want to sit here?
Um, Leah and I started working on this well over a year ago, and then Leah picked up the ball with Becky and Gary, and I'm grateful that it's finally gotten to a point where we're able to take actionable steps on this. And if this was a union contract, we'd have no choice. And I think just... My personal thought is just because it's not union doesn't mean that we still don't have a choice to equitably take care of our employees who are the lowest paid anyway. So I guess, I mean, that's my thought. We find a way to make it happen now with this during the special time meeting, and then make it work next time too, somehow. We do have still ARPA, which we do not want to tap into for these things, because it's not a one-time expense. If that's... If we're over barrel, and that's how we have to approach it, I think that's something we'll have to consider, but...
I mean, I think I met with Gary and Becky a couple of times about it, and I fully support it. My concern is just that this is kind of the first time that we're talking about it, and we need to decide if we're placing it or not, and that we need to make sure that we're going to make the commitment to fund it and going forward. And it's a big... We know our departments have really cut their budgets a lot already, the past couple of years especially. And so I think that this is going to have to lead into a larger conversation, is how we raise funds in town.
Yes, agreed.
Because I would hate to have this pass here, and then in the budget season going forward for fiscal year '24, then suddenly we have to make significant cuts, because we need to balance the budget. And these are the... This group is the group that kind of is always on that yo-yo effect, and this might feel like a really big kind of, like, step in the right direction, but then I think there's still going to be some caution and protectiveness, because they know that they're not...
Absolutely.
No, it's half a year.
I think in this room, we... I think we can all agree that it should happen. We'll find a way... Try to find a way to happen, so with all good intentions. I'd like to see this be placed for this, and spend the next few months working really hard on educating the town people, and coming up with some plans about what we can do. So...
So here's... Based on what you were just saying too, I don't disagree with what you just said. I mean, we're all... I think we're all... We all say that these folks need something to boost those levels, right? But again, the first time talking about it. But the thing you got to keep in mind also is, as you said, we've got to find the money somewhere, but then when we start looking and we start cutting... Not cutting, reducing the levels, because there's no other money to fund this, departments are asking for things every year that we keep... We haven't had this for it, so we haven't had that for it. Well, there's going to be less of that if we don't find other ways to do it, to put this into it, and be able to fund those other items. And I agree that you don't want to use those other funds, because it's a one-time situation.
If I may, through the chair, Tom, and this is for the initial six months. So at least this is a step in the right direction. If dire straits hit again, which are in dire straits now, come July 1st, it would mean they wouldn't get their next eligible step or their increase.
I don't disagree with any of that.
So it wouldn't be the 80-something thousand dollars I want it to be. I just think they've been slighted way too long, and they have to be brought up. And I know, you agree. I know that I just...
I disagree with you.
We'll find a way. We'll make it happen. That's my opinion. We'll make it happen.
Yes.
I had a couple of points. Did I just hear you say we would undo it on July 1st?
No, he didn't.
No, 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 no. This is the schedule for the first six months. This is a step that they're going to do.
Right.
Come July 1st, they'll be doing the next increase.
But you just said, if we don't have the money then, then we'll revert to what we were at.
Not to revert this. That probably has... This is just conversation. But come July 1st, you wouldn't be able to give them the next step.
But you'd still be...
But they would stay here. So it wouldn't be the $80,000 cost for FY '24.
$80,000.
But it's still $80,000.
So we're back where we've been for 20-something years, because I remember fighting...
Long time ago. We've always... This has always come up on the table.
One other more minor thing, we... Someone just said we need to educate the voters. We probably ought to spell out what OAD and MTP mean in the first time they're mentioned in here.
OAD, Officer Administration. Officer Administration. MTP is Manager TP. Only a little number, so I know.
Somebody might understand this as OAD would be not...
Both non-ful...
Would be overtime eligible, and the other would not be. Salary versus hourly, those kind of things. I know it's not salary, it's... But it's... Those are the similar structures.
I agree with Ted. You should just have an explanation after those alphabet letters there, and just say what it is. That's all. So people know.
Tamika, could you just spell out those?
I'm getting old. I don't remember them either.
You should. I was counting on you.
I don't know what they stand for, but I know what they mean. But we can spell that out. All right. Any more discussion, or do we want to take a vote on placing or not?
We got a vote on placing.
Okay.
Didn't we... Did we already make a motion?
We had a second. We had a second.
I posted a second, and I had questions.
Yeah.
So we're roll call.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Nickel's eye?
Galvin eye.
White man eye.
And binoy eye. Thank you. Article 5 is sponsored by the Police Department, to see if the town will purchase... Excuse me. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash of sum of $9,845 for the purchase of 11 bulletproof vests for the Police Department, or to take any action in relation thereto. This will require a majority vote.
And for the chair.
Do I... Do I have a second? Thank you for discussion. I'm just remembering what to do. Don't mess with me.
If she allows, you can speak now.
Can I? From the vice chair?
I'm the head vice chair.
Chief Monaco was unable to attend tonight, because he has come down with the virus. So he has explained this to me. Obviously, the safety equipment is needed, especially in today's world. These items that he's looking for have gone through and passed the warranty expected shelf life period. And also to say to that, to add to that, they're fully reimbursable. They're to a bulletproof vest partnership, which is funded 50% by the feds and 50% by the state.
And so are we asking for money? What did I miss?
You have to spend it first, then get it back.
To spend it first, get it back. Okay, so that's... Does that...
Not right away. You don't... He was very, very specific. You don't get it right away, but you do get it back.
And 11 is to fully outfit the department?
Yeah, it's not fully... There's 11 that would need to be purchased, because six officers are beyond the five-year warranty or shelf life, and they need five more whose warranty period will expire in 2023.
Thank you.
Motion was made, right?
Yeah.
Second?
Oh, no, it's already second.
It's already second.
We just got to wait for her call for a roll call.
Can you... Can we... Can that screen come back down a little bit?
Peter. It's not Peter.
Here we go. So I have a big question.
Yes.
So if certified free cash, wouldn't... Isn't this something that could come out of those one-time funds you have?
It's going to be reimbursed anyway.
Totally reimbursed?
100% reimbursed.
Oh, I thought you said half. I'm sorry.
No, I said 50% feds.
No, no, I know. I'm sorry. I was listening differently.
Don't be sorry. Love means never having to say you're sorry.
So if I'm a towns person sitting on the floor that day, there's nothing to say in the explanation that it is fully reimbursable? Is that something that we should put in there? Because even if we say it out loud, they might not hear it, but they might read it, so they'll get it twice.
Tamika, did you get that?
Tamika is...
I'm behind you. I'm behind you.
She's got your back, Karen.
So can we... Do we need to amend?
No.
Anything yet? It's not...
I'm being worn out. Just give it to me.
Explanation. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on these? Roll call vote?
Nickel's eye?
Galvin eye.
White man eye.
And binoy eye. Thank you.
Want me to read one?
Please.
Article 6, sponsored by the Department of Public Works, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash to sum of $110,000, including all costs per survey and design, and any cost incidental and related thereto of any new sewer force main in Miles Road, or take any action in relation thereto.
A motion, please.
A second?
Wait one second.
Discussion.
Karen, do we know what the water and sewer free cash is?
Right now, available, yes, Karen, is $469,053.
Thank you.
If I can just chime in on that, that's what was left over at the end of last year. So that's the... That has to be certi... The new numbers have to be certified again this year.
Right, but that's what we're thinking it's going to be.
No, no.
No, that was what was left over at the end.
It's left over from last year.
So are we expecting more to go into it?
Yes.
About how much are we looking at?
We don't have that number yet.
We don't even have an idea?
Not for water and sewer.
And just for clarification, this is for engineering repairs.
Yes, that's just the design.
I was just going to ask you. This is just the design?
Yes.
From the floor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Joe, do we have the money in there? This is for the design project, and you know CIPC always has a concern with follow-up, and that is, will the money be there, once we spend it on the survey and that, will the money be there to move the project forward? Because we're spending a lot of money on this survey.
It's not just survey. It's survey and design. We got a couple of problems. One, we don't have a good location for Miles Road, and that's... And everything with sewer comes down to elevations. So you have to do survey to do sewer design. There's no way around that.
Okay.
The force mains original to the late 50s. It was built for Deveraux, and then repurposed when the developments Brunel went in, and it's broken two or three times. And when it breaks, it causes a lot of environmental damage. I frankly can't tell you if we'll have all the money in hand to make the upgrade. We won't know until we get the design and we have the engineer's estimate. If I cover one eye, can I say that it'll be someplace between half a million and 3/4 of a million? Yes, it probably will be. But the first step is to get a design and have an engineer's estimate.
And follow-up question? Where would that money come from?
We'd have two options. We could either borrow more, look to retained earnings, or possibly go for a grant.
Option 3.
You can't go for a grant, though, unless you have the stuff in hand. You can't ask the money unless you have that done.
If I may, I was just going to say to that point, I know that the state has a lot of money available through ARPA, and also excess earnings and everything, but we keep hearing at MMA meetings and everything, is that they need to be shovel-ready. they need to be shovel-ready with design and engineering done and ready to go. And so even to just be able to apply for that funding, you need to have
The design.
The documentation in hand.
Joe, just curious, because I haven't been down miles for a while, you mentioned Deveraux. Are there town houses on Miles that were, that are also going to be serviced by this?
We have a pump station at the end of Miles Road. There are several houses on Miles that have sewers that are separate and distinct from this. It's not a question of service. The pump station on Miles Road, several houses drained to it, maybe two or, two hundred in the Deveraux facility, drained to Miles Road Station, and then it's pumped up over the hill to Palm Augusta where it can run gravity. Okay? The pipeline that goes from the pump station to Palm Augusta is the pipeline that's become basically outdated. And it's broken a couple of times.
Okay.
So when it breaks, you run the risk of going into the pond or making a big mess. It doesn't usually cause someone to lose service, but they're expensive. I mean, last time we did a repair, probably ten or fifteen thousand dollars. So long-term, you want to replace it.
Great.
And that was my same question you've just said. But, so, the one you're talking about comes from the pump station that was originally from Deveraux. It's now being used by?
Two hundred houses.
The houses that are on Palm Augusta Road, correct?
No, being used by everything that's in Brunel.
Well, okay, yeah, yeah. Brunel. I meant, I meant the development on, but, so, but there are two forced mains on Miles Road, so.
There's a small local one, a low-pressure line that services several homes, that's different. This is a six-inch cast iron main, almost a mile a pipe.
Yep, okay. But there's no, is there a possibility of combining them or doing something?
No. They're not, they're separate for those purposes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Nichols' eye. Galvin's eye.
Whitman's eye.
And Benoit's eye.
I did that one, didn't I?
All right, fine. Article seven, Department of Public Works, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, a sum of twelve thousand dollars to be added to the appropriation made for snow and ice to defray the costs to be incurred performing snow plowing on unimproved private gravel roads in Rutland as previously approved and documented on the list held by the Department of Public Works for the 2022-2023 winter season, or take any action in relation thereto. Can I have a?
Make a motion for, for place for discussion.
Second, for discussion? All right, discussion?
I thought there was no, with snow removal, there was no worry about cost. I mean, not necessarily worry about cost, but monies we had to put in there at this time.
When we, um, a year ago, when we did the budget, um, we came up with things we could cut and couldn't cut. And one of the things we decided to cut was plowing on unimproved gravel roads to make a point because snow is so grossly underfunded. So if you remember, last fall, at the last Fall Town Meeting, we voted to plow private gravel streets or the trails. And we decided going forward, we don't budget for that, we put it on as a vote to make the point. So that's why it's being placed again.
Okay.
They wanna, do, does that answer your question, I'm sorry?
No, I just.
I would just recommend that the listing of those roads is available because someone's going to ask. Oh, right, we've got it, but I'm thinking we're gonna, we're gonna need that.
What was the snow deficit a year ago?
Two six.
No, the total deficit.
Just for stones?
Was it?
Yeah, I thought it was in the two.
Two eighty-five, two eighty-five. Was a lot.
A lot. You may want to have that number as well.
Any other discussion?
All right. He said for discussion, does it, so does he actually make a motion for?
Well, motion and please. Okay.
Second.
Um, roll call vote?
Clark's eye.
Nichols' eye.
Galvin's eye.
Whitman's eye.
And Benoit's eye.
This is Article eight, sponsored by the Department of Public Works. See if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, to some ten thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new snowplow assembly, or take any action in relation thereto.
Get an X, mate.
Do I have a motion?
Motion please.
Whitman's seconds.
Discussion?
So is this to replace an old plow?
Yes.
Is it the plow too, or just the assembly?
Just the, it's the plow, it all comes as one piece. It's on our capital program.
Okay. And how, is it an older truck too, or?
What happened for years was the town would buy a new truck and reuse the plow assembly. Some of our plow assemblies, as the acting town administrator can tell you, are twenty-five to thirty years old. And we're just slowly replacing them over time.
Okay. So we have a copy of an article, Article sixteen, and I didn't put down what, I don't know what date it was from, it was attached to the, um, the article request. When, so, for a plow assembly, when was, when was that?
We did one a year ago.
A year ago, so now we'll have two, okay. All right. Hello?
How are you?
Good.
Through the tip, uh, chair, Joe, um, I know back in twenty twenty-one, C I P C approved two plows, one was a larger plow, one was a smaller plow. And I think that total was like ten thousand five hundred or so for the two. Is this one in addition to that? Because I don't know that we've, we've addressed a third one, or considered a third one in the plan.
I'd have to go back and look at the list, I don't have it in front of me. I do know we plugged a plow in almost, one a year, every year, for like the next five.
Yes, and I do see that, you know, in the last round, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, I do see that in our last round, it was listed, and we had it as listed, um, as a number two priority. But it actually, it didn't get recommended because other things scored ahead. So that's why I was asking if this is a, a separate plow from the ones that were already recommended by C I P C.
I'd have to check, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
If it is, do you have, you're just asking for information, or do you?
Well, I, I bring it up just because it, you know, technically it's a capital item. And it hasn't been, if, if it's a third plow, it hasn't gone through the process of being recommended by C I P C yet. So that's why I bring it up.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, and I think, if I can follow up on Joe's. There was a five-year capital plan done. And just so there's no misconception out there, it was done, but it's still, anything that meets the criteria still has to come through C I P C. Whether it was recommended or, or on the five-year plan, it doesn't matter. It still has to come through us, you just can't go to an article
Okay.
For the future, if anybody's looking at that.
Well, you're saying for the future, but I don't want to have misstepped here and bypassed your committee, so.
I wish our committee was here, we don't have a full committee tonight because two of them are sick. So we were gonna cover a lot of these issues and try to vote on some of the stuff that was in the article so we could let you know, but we can't, I mean, we understand the need, we've been through this before on the plow. If it came to us, I don't know where it would rate, because right now, nothing has come through the committee yet for next year. So all we're doing is waiting for that stuff to come in, so I don't know where that would score. We approved a plow the last time because we thought it was necessary, would we do it? We could do it again, but I don't know. I mean, I, just, when we sit on this, I know Joe's needs. I, I know he has a tremendous need for stuff. But sometimes other things, whether it be a senior center, whether it be, just rates higher than what we can do, so. I, I guess by the time we meet again and do it, this will be a town article, so, Joe, what do you say, we leave it up to them, I mean, there's nothing, so.
Well, my understanding, I may be wrong, Tamika, I'm looking on my shoulder at you, we could place an article, and if you decide that you don't want it to go to the floor, can we pull the article if we, again, meet, no?
No.
Okay.
If you place the article.
I thought there was something else.
We, we, we would not pull the article on it.
Or we could take.
At least not on this session.
Okay.
Okay. Did I say that right, Joe, you feel that way?
Um, I'm not sure, I, it was clear what it meant.
If they decide to place the article, we would get up at the town meeting and say that it hasn't cleared C I P C, but we would not pull the article at this moment.
Well, we can't pull the article now, so I misspoke.
Right.
But we could, you could do that and.
I, I know we're splitting hairs here, and each of us has to watch where we step on the landmines, but.
I just don't want to circumvent your board's authority.
And you know, the other thing, if I could just say something, with all the administrative changes, no offense, Gary and the previous town administrator, we've produced a couple of different capital plans, and they've walked through a couple of different procedures, and I'll be frank with you, it's a little fuzzy.
Yeah.
So there is room for error, that, that's all.
Right.
If I could, um, understood, I, I get that, there's been some transition, but the, the C I P C in its F Y twenty-three round of its process, in April, on April twenty-seventh, I have a copy here if anyone wants to see it, we did provide our recommendations for F Y twenty-three capital improvement items. A plow is not on there. So that's, that's why I'm raising it. Our next round of consideration is starting now for F Y twenty-four, and that's where we would typically take up additional items being added to the list.
On that list, what do you have for D P W equipment?
We have, um, I don't, I don't know that it falls under D P W, Joe, but we have, let me just read them.
Yeah, read a couple.
The ones we have. Number one was the breathing air compressor for fire, or ambulance.
Funded by others or?
Understood, yeah. Two was the woodhouse structural repairs. Three was the sewer service truck, including a plow, so that was a truck with the plow.
Right.
Four was a used five-ton dump and sander and plow, so again, another truck with plow. Five was the second half of the wood studio roof repair. And then six was the replacement of the Naqwag electrical switchgear. Those were the items that were in the F Y twenty-three plan.
So, I'll be honest with you, we went with the plow because we didn't think there was fifty thousand to do a truck. Nor did we think we could get a D P W truck anymore for fifty thousand because the market's gotten that tight. So we went with the plow instead, but that's the way that, that was the thought process.
Okay.
But it's still a capital item?
The, the, the plow was.
The plow was a capital item.
The plow is. Our requirement say that if it's at least ten thousand dollars, five years, expected life, capital improvement, it must go through C I P C. Now, I don't know if Joe can buy a plow for lesser money.
The last one came in at ninety-five hundred dollars, we wish, we just rounded up to ten.
There we go.
This is, this is the bylaw.
You, you want to go ninety-seven, five? Going once?
That's certainly something to consider.
Are you also saying that this plow replaces the truck with the plow?
It doesn't, oh, it doesn't, so they're both, they're both junk.
But if you, if, if, if you got two trucks with plows, would you need this one?
No. But we can't do both.
Spend, but that's.
That truck's gonna be a little more money.
Yes, I understand, but I, I guess what it was before, we can say no, it should have gone through C I P C, C I P C has not, um, brought it to us. Number two could be that we put it on as an article as requested and C I P C stands up at town, on the floor, and says that they, it did not go through the correct procedures they wished that it had. Or we ask Mr. Buckley to lower this to ninety-eight hundred dollars, bring it below the ten thousand dollars, and place that. I think those are our free option, or just don't place it.
I said go with the ninety-eight.
He says he needs it.
He has needed it, if I, if I can, because, um, when I was in a different seat, what we used to do with our plows, um, maybe Seth, I'm sure you run Tommy, I'm sure, we used to be able to purchase Black Beauty. We dumped a lot of sand and sand last, but because of the environmental hazards and the containment that was required for that, we just couldn't do it because of the expense and what it did to the, what it did to the environment if we didn't do it. So this plow is needed, I, I certainly know the shape of some of the plows down there. And I know he can get it for ninety-eight, no more than ninety-eight fifty.
So we say ninety-nine.
Change in his numbers.
Change the number. Nine, 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 nine.
I might have heard wrong, but I think I heard an option four. Now, you say that there was an approval for a fifty thousand something dollar truck with a plow that's never gonna get bought?
Not never.
It's not approval, but it's on, it was on their plan to bring forward for twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Which it didn't get brought forward, so.
It'd be more palatable to buy a ten thousand dollar plow and drop the truck off, but I don't know if that, if the truck's never gonna come to fruition.
We couldn't fund their capital plan last year, remember?
So like a new truck is about a buck fifty, maybe a buck seventy-five. So a used one's about fifty, but the market has changed from the last time we bought a used truck, you can't really get them anymore.
A vehicle right now. Yes, sir.
Just, um, we have been, the C I P C has been working with Becky to try to formulate how to purchase some of these longer items under a bond package. We just started the process, so something like that is what we're trying to work in where we can get as much as we can for a minimal amount of cost
Yes.
To the taxpayer, so.
Sounds great to me.
If, if the plow can suffice till we can get other things in place.
So, the longer we sit here, the more I'm gonna go up, I was thinking nine, ninety-five hundred, ninety-nine fifty, something like that, so tell us.
Can it be under ten thousand?
Under, under ten thousand.
You gotta put a number down.
Nine thousand nine hundred fifty, ninety-nine.
The number's gonna come from Joe. Number has to come from Joe. Nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So I'll pick a motion, adjust, adjust this article to nine hundred and fifty.
So, Tamika? The warrant that will be posted once they place all these articles will not have the amounts on it. Okay, these are more the motions.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I'm like, wait a second, we should be. I agree with you, I agree wholeheartedly, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't wrong, I was like, okay, hold on a second.
So we need to amend the motion because we've changed the number in the motion? So you're, you're amending? Who seconded that? Leah, did you second that?
I think so, I'll make, I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Clark's eye.
Nichols' eye.
Galvin's eye.
Whitman's eye.
And Benoit's eye. Article nine is ad hoc bylaw committee, they, to see if the town will appropriate from available funds, free cash, the sum of two thousand dollars for legal review of the proposed bylaw amendments as approved by Article number eighteen of the November twelfth, twenty twenty special town meeting, as may be necessary, or to take any action in relation thereto. Do we have a motion?
Motion, please.
Do we have a second?
Second, for discussion? So I, what is their current balance for legal, do they currently have?
They had requested eight thousand, and they're requesting two thousand more.
They're requesting eight thousand, but only half was appropriated.
I was gonna say four thousand, it was in my head.
We only gave four grand that year.
Requested.
But of course, we haven't seen legally reviewed bylaws yet either.
Just a second, Peter, before I forget my train of thought, because I just breezed over this because I'm looking for figures. If we could change the explanation to the committee requested eight thousand dollars for legal review of the entire, but only four, forty thousand was appropriated, rather than only half? Please, just, I think that's for clarity.
Right, but is that four thousand still there?
It's. Peter? That's questions for you.
We had about twenty-five hundred dollars remaining after all the legal review that was done for annual and we've started to spend the remaining money.
Becky?
I have the balance as of right, as if the last warrant was two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars in that line item.
Peter, is this an estimate that you've received from KP Law or is?
No, we're running on, our original estimate that we did ourselves based on the number of pages was roughly eight thousand dollars. Based on the number of pages that we've done and the number of pages remaining, we believe that we will need about six thousand and not eight thousand to complete the work.
Okay, thank you.
See, we save money.
I think that's what that looks like, but I don't know.
Save money.
All right, any?
Two thousand bucks to.
Any further discussion?
So I amend my second for discussion to second took place.
Mine's black, it looks weird.
Any further discussion? If not, let's take roll call.
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Inbinoid, aye.
Article ten, sponsored by the fire department, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, free cash, the sum of seventeen thousand nine hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents to account number zero zero one two two zero five two zero 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 zero. Fire, purchase services or take any action in relationship thereto.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, please.
Discussion?
Any questions? Comments? Okay, so.
Are you awake? I just want to make sure.
Basically, this line item is purchase services. This is what we pay for outside vendors to repair and maintain our fire apparatus. The four largest pieces of apparatus that we have have an average age of seventeen years. So they are getting up in life use. The dollar amount is actually two repair bills for two trucks that have taken place since July first. We just had our DOT state inspection of all the fire apparatus fleet. Lot of deficiencies found. I need truck tires and right now it's a national shortage of truck tires. We can't find them, so we're working on that. The other day we had a star to blow up. So these are the types of things that are not even included in this. If you go back two years ago, this line item was funded at thirty-four thousand dollars. The year before that, in twenty-one, it was funded at thirty-four thousand dollars as well. Last two years, it's been cut to twenty-five. And basically, we have enough money normally to just basically do oil changes and minor repairs. And this year, we had two major breakdowns on two apparatus that have really depleted this account. The line item was funded at twenty-five thousand one hundred. After this warrant that will be signed next Tuesday, we have left less than five thousand dollars in that account. So we still have two more large apparatus that need to be repaired and hopefully that'll get us through the remaining of the year. So that's, if you want to round that to a round number because Karen doesn't like pennies, feel free to add the line up.
So in essence, that line item should have been forty-three thousand?
It should have been, if it would have been kept at thirty-four thousand over the last two years, I would have been able to maintain and be ahead of repairs instead of, you know, not repairing things and then catastrophic breakdown, so.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Inbinoid, aye. Article eleven, sponsored by the library, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, the sum of eleven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents for the purchase of ten tables and one hundred chairs for the large meeting room in the library or take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion to place?
Wait one second.
Discussion?
Through the chair, is this something that's needed or just wanted?
I don't know.
So the explanation says the tables and chairs have been used by many people over the last twenty years. So there are several that are damaged or broken beyond repair. The meeting space of the library is in constant use by the community and should be updated periodically. So it sounds like at least some of them are broken or on their way to being unusable. I don't know for sure and it's just going on with the.
Yes, sir, this is another over ten thousand dollar.
No, it isn't, but a little historical fact. The library has started requesting chairs and tables, I want to say eight years ago, nine years ago, and it never fell under us because it was not a major table improvement. It was bits and pieces. So it's not like this is the first time they've been looking for something to replace those.
I guess for me, it's not just about the library. It's looking at the whole purchasing power of the town. And I haven't taken the time myself to learn, does every department order separately from WB Mason or Staples or whomever they order from? Or are we under contract with somebody like WB Mason where we can combine our purchases to get better pricing? And the same thing, copiers are coming up and I don't know how many copies are in town, but are we working with somebody that can provide the copiers and come in and maintain them? You get a maintenance lease kind of thing. So these are just things that I'm thinking about because the other thing I'm looking at is four hundred dollars or three hundred and twenty-five dollars of this is a freight fee. So is this the best way to appropriate them by having them set without a contract by WB Mason or somebody else where you might be able to get a break on freight charges? So I don't, Becky, I'm looking at you because you would know whether everybody purchases individually or do we have a contract or some?
For furniture?
Well, WB Mason would be the same thing as ordering a stapler.
I would think we're on a state contract. I mean, it's a town on a state contract. So if we're not ordering on that contract, I'd be surprised, but I also don't know that.
Well, we are.
Well, we are. Yes, we are. As a town, you are.
Price is better. Otherwise, we'll go out and solicit.
Right, so is that a state contract price?
Yeah, we have Quill and WB.
Okay.
WB is on a state contract. Whether the item purchased is part of.
Eleven thousand dollars plus. Eleven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. It sounds like a lot for ten tables and.
More than your plow.
Chairs, but.
No, I'm just saying, based on the number, it's probably a state contract. The state contracts for office furniture. We buy rock salt that way, fuel that way.
Thank you for teaching me about that. It's a question that I've been wanting to ask for a long time and haven't done it.
I don't know, Leah, I don't actually get involved in furniture purchases. That's usually each individual department. Probably fire probably does more furniture than we do. We do a chair at a time.
So if they did a chair, a table at a time ten years ago, we'd have to be up to ten tables?
But I think also you're paying free every time.
Does somebody else have this WB Mason? I saw it last night.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It's expensive.
What kind of table is it?
I mean, the chairs.
It's an eight-foot, height adjustable, bifold granite, plastic banquet table with a carrying handle at a hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-seven cents each.
No, it's nicer than this.
That's the room over here. Are we talking the room over here? And how often is that room used?
Well, coming up, it's going to be used a lot because that's where the museum on Main Street is going to be, festival of trees, all of that kind of stuff.
So the other question though is if we have all of these stacking, a hundred stacking chairs, where are those going to live?
They live in the back room.
And we're going to have a cart to pull them out?
They have them now in the back room. But I would be curious as to how many are actually broken. We have, I don't believe we've ever had a meeting in there where we haven't had enough seats.
We haven't had enough seats, but I actually took part several years ago in setting that up and there was a lot of chairs that I wasn't able to use, but we always had enough.
Yeah, that's.
So I don't know, I can't give you a number. I thought Gary was going to be here. I can't give you a number of what she's saying is.
What's the capacity of that room?
Seth, was that one twenty?
Didn't we have?
I think it's one twenty.
Is it? Okay, because I remember we were going to have something, we were afraid we were going to overflow and I couldn't remember.
A ZB meeting.
I don't know.
It was for Egress. That's why we had to clear aisle to the back door. And we also had to have, Seth, did we have to have a fire, a fireman down?
We didn't need to because the occupancy didn't meet the capacity, so we're fine.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty at least. The room can accommodate a hundred chairs. All right. That was all my questions. Anybody else have any discussion?
Did we maybe look at a used furniture place to see if we could get tables and chairs from there?
Rotten Miss is going out of business, so they have chairs and chairs.
I was thinking, you know, office furniture places that you can get them.
A lot of offices are downsizing, so there's a lot of stuff available.
There could be a lot of stuff there that, yes, I realize it might not be. But I know I've done that at certain places that I've worked.
Yeah.
And they will deliver.
Can we, Seth, can you place the article and let me do a little investigation for prices and exactly what is needed by seeing what's beyond repair? But can you still place the article because we don't have to put a dollar amount, correct?
Right, that's correct. The dollar amount's for the motion, so.
Okay, can we do that?
Sure. And I think, I think one thing just to be mindful is because that room is always reconfigured is that they're light enough and portable enough that people can set up and move around. Some, you know, some nicer quality tables are heavier and more difficult for two people to manage or whatever. So I think that's one of the considerations.
Okay. Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Well, so we have to amend it so there's no amount. So she put an amount in there.
I know, we're reading them out. Maybe we shouldn't read the amounts going forward and they won't have to amend anything.
Well, couldn't it just be not to exceed that amount? I always think of it that way.
The warrant article will not.
You made the motion to please the warrant, but you're not specifically reading out the article word for word.
I am, we are.
Yeah, we are reading it out, that's why, just to make sure that we know.
Okay, I thought you were just reading it to like hear it. I didn't know that that was actually a motion.
It has been.
I'll amend my motion to adjust the finance to eleven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents to a new updated price for the future.
Amount to be determined.
Amount to be determined, yeah. That's great. Who seconded this same ones?
I think I may have.
Two second?
That's what it is.
Okay, and then roll call.
It's a word height adjustable though, right?
Waitman, aye.
This is a height adjustable.
It says height adjustable.
Yeah.
So it's very similar.
Not really sure why we need height adjustable for meetings. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that's more for other things versus meetings, but that's just me.
So article twelve.
Should shut it off.
Sponsors the library to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash. A sum for the purchase of color printer for resident. I think that's of the town and staff use at the library or to take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion to place?
Motion to place.
Second?
Wait one second.
Discussion?
So I mean, according to the explanation, this is really just supposed to replace an appropriate one? Is that correct? That's what it sounds like.
Yes, I have a question. Becky, do you know, so we had the, we needed to use a fax machine, so we came up here. It's a dollar a page to fax and fifty cents for every second page after, every page after the first. Is there any, this says, I can understand for library use for staff, but regarding, do you know we collect fees?
At the library?
For the coffee, if a resident came in and wanted to use a coffee?
At the town hall, you mean?
They do, no, in the library.
In the library, here.
They charge for coffee, for coffee.
I, I don't know.
It's only like ten, maybe it's a ten cents a page.
Ten cents.
Yeah.
But that's a color, this is a color printer.
Yeah, it might be a little bit more than that. It was always fairly affordable.
There's always been a fee for a resident to get a coffee or something.
Well, I'd be interested to know.
Where the money goes?
It goes in the library gift account. Pretty sure that's the.
So that's where this money should come from, the gift account.
That's what I would, I mean, if you're taking in money from residents to use something and then you're asking them to buy it again?
But I think that would just be covering like toner and paper essentially, not the actual machine itself. So I would think, I mean, ten cents.
I hear you, completely hear you. If it's paper, and I understand that's probably ten cents, they probably figure ten cents a sheet, but it would be.
Paper's a lot more expensive than ten cents a sheet.
It may need to be updated.
And why are we not buying this through a WB Mason if we have a state contract?
Carol was asking, do we have a contract with them?
Well, yeah, but this is through automated business solutions.
We have a contract with them.
We do. Okay, did we look to price this with WB Mason? Amazon, I mean, let's do some price comparison to see because, I mean, these things are pretty easy nowadays to fund. And you can look around three or four places and you'd be surprised at differences. I just did it at the office.
I don't know that she did that or not, Karen, but I am.
Is there a maintenance and upkeep contract? Because it may have to be done through that.
Well, yeah, we have one for a copy machine.
We have one in the annex.
My guess is for, it doesn't look like it.
But ours is on a much bigger scale. I think this is more, I'm thinking this is more just like a, almost like a desktop.
It is.
I was going to say, looking at the quote. It says it includes delivery and onsite setup.
That's not a desktop, no.
It's compact.
Yeah, it is. It sits on a desk. We have one like that on our desk.
That's what I've done.
Sorry, what did you say, Tamika?
Oh, I was just going to say, it's bigger than a desktop, but it's not comparable to like the copy machine that you have in town hall. Those are the ones we see a lot.
Oh, really?
Snowplows too. Really? I, I mean, I'm with Karen on this. You know, you get, we can say you need a new printer, let's see if we can buy you a new printer, but have you cost compared? Have you, should you get the bigger one that the town offices have that have maintenance agreements? And, you know, where's the cost benefit? So I myself would approve of getting it on there because they need one, they need one, but to do some more light work, about making sure that we're getting.
If I may, I think generally our department heads put together, when they're asking for requests, correct me if I'm wrong, for funding, they usually grab something off the state bid list to get a ballpark pricing and then they're usually very good about shopping around and looking for a lower cost item or a better value item, obviously not to exceed that amount. So I think that they're looking for a number because they have to have a number to present to us so we know what we're working with.
Yeah.
But I think when they actually have money in hand, that I'd like to think that our department heads are very.
Yeah, I think probably what I should have done is skip the cost, you know, for that machine and see how much things cost, but would they, would a larger machine that they're leasing and having maintenance agreements with, would that be?
It's a color printer. It's not worth it.
Then the town offices shouldn't be.
But they're not using color.
I think.
You're not leasing a color one, you're leasing a.
They are colors. The big ones in the selectmen's office and our, the whole town hall that all the departments use.
So we didn't place an amount?
No, we didn't place an amount.
Would it make sense also to find out how much money is in that fund that they've been collecting money for? Maybe there's money in there to pay for buying this or all of this.
I think there's a few more things to know about the picture myself, but that's just me.
Gary, we have about seventeen days till the town meeting and we, as a finance committee, need to meet to vote favorably or unfavorable. So you got to kind of light a fire under getting these things done sooner than later.
Got you.
Because I don't really, I know. 'Cause I don't really, I know, I don't think everyone can be at the town hall, at the town meeting at four o'clock for us to go through and do favorable or unfavorable, so we're gonna need this sooner than later.
What sooner, what is your law?
I mean, to be honest with you, I would like to have it all done, finalized by next Wednesday so we could have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna caution everyone involved, further down on the list, there's an article to replace a broken heater at DPW. I have a quote I got this week from the vendor.
Yes.
He's on the state contractors list, very good, did some work here in the library. They're holding prices for about a week. Just be cognizant of any larger purchases, even people on the state contract can't hold a price listing. The market has become that volatile, so all I'm asking is be aware that we might give you a price, we'll do the best we absolutely can, but just be understand for a lot of bigger purchases or a lot of stuff you have, anything you have to order, it's, vendors are not holding prices.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote? On the article?
Okay.
Nichols' eye.
Wait a minute.
Galvin, eh?
Benoid, eh?
Carol, are you placing without an amount?
Yes, we're placing without an amount.
And potential funding sources.
Town, we've ever placed with amounts in the past, I don't...
No, the warrant article doesn't have...
Right.
Warrant article doesn't, she just put them in here so we could have...
Right, 'cause I think I had asked for ballpark's costs and everything also, like, I mean...
Article thirteen sponsors DPW to see if the town will appropriate from available funds, free cash, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the replacement of two failed heaters in the DPW garage, or take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion to place?
Motion advised.
Second?
Second?
Discussion.
So this doesn't matter, 'cause it's just a repair for fifteen thousand, it's not really, is that really not considered like when I'm looking at as a capital improvement?
It's one of ten units.
Yeah, it's not a capital improvement, it's a repair.
Doesn't meet the criteria, no, thank you.
So it's a replacement of two for fifteen thousand?
Actually, it's only gonna cover one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we just got updating pricing, from when we first wrote the article, the price is already on our, it'll cover one. We have three failed units in the building, we're only gonna replace the one closest to the garage where the mechanics are all the time. We're hoping to get a grant to update the balance of the heat in the building a year from now.
So if our current pricing, even though we're not placing with costs, we still are trying to be diligent here.
I should say one heater.
Joe said, yeah, Joe, Joe sent us something today that he got a price, a quote, for one heater is twelve thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars, so it's a whole lot more. So if we, unless we say two thousand, two, two heaters, it's gonna cost almost twenty-five thousand, then we have to reduce this to one heater.
No, we planned on one. One is fine, you can, that's a misprint, you can modify it.
Yeah, so we'll have to, that's, we'll have to modify.
To twelve thousand?
No, the one heater, not two.
So you're gonna leave at fifteen?
Yeah, leave it at fifteen, just do the one.
So do you want a motion to change one?
Amend to one.
So you just need to amend your motion, right?
I did the second, I think skip made it.
Wait a second.
Uh-oh, amended.
And I, I second the amendment.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Okay.
Nichols' eye.
Galvin, eh?
Wait a minute.
Benoid, eh?
Want me to read one to you?
Please.
Article fourteen, sponsored by the Public Works, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, the sum to be determined to recover DPW funds used to pay for the cutting of dangerous trees along town roads and to fund an additional sum for future tree work as needed for the remainder of the fiscal year or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a motion to place?
Motion to place.
Second.
I have a question, should this be two separate articles, the fifteen and then the additional five, or just keep it as one, is there...
Just keep it as one.
So it's the same work, right, Gary?
Well, it's the same work, but what we're actually doing with this is paying a bill for ninety-eight hundred.
We paid the bill.
Right, but we're trying to now raise the money to pay that bill.
Well, the line item for forestry has been zero funded for three years.
And then, then have the balance between the bill of ninety-eight hundred and fifteen thousand, which is, we're not talking money, I guess, but, um, to basically give a, a small line item to pay for the bills.
Pay up the one we spent already and five to do some more tree work.
Oh, okay, so...
Five, fifteen total, ten to pay the bill.
Then the five shouldn't be in, it shouldn't even make mention of it.
Right.
The numbers won't be in there anyway, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I was thinking it needed fifteen to pay the bill and then a...
No, ten, yeah, ten to pay the bill.
Okay, that's...
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight to pay the bill and then seven thousand for future work.
Yeah.
Have you identified trees?
Oh, we have plenty of trees.
Yeah, okay.
And Joe, I know you usually work with, National Grid usually takes care of stuff in their power line purview, but...
They did a boatload of work for the town already.
Yeah.
None of the trees we took down, there, there are two problems with, a lot of the trees we took down in this last round, which is like six locations, Maple Ridge and Palma Guset, four out of the six trees we took down were too big for DPW crews, and there were no wires involved, so there was nobody to go after, and they were all in the right of way, they were town trees, and they were dangerous, so...
Any more discussion? Yes, sir.
I know you probably don't wanna hear from the peanut gallery, but just to make it clear, I'm not sure what the, what the motion was, but, 'cause it caused a little confusion here, I would just recommend that the wording of the article be, the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be used for the cutting of dangerous trees along town roads, and leave it at that.
That was gonna be my, I think I made the motion, so I was gonna amend my mo, did I make the motion? So I was gonna amend to essentially say the same thing that Joe was saying.
Amend the motion.
I think Tamika has it.
Yep, and who, who seconded that?
Lyndon.
Lyndon?
I second the amendment.
Any further discussion again? Roll call, vote?
Okay.
Nichols' eye.
Galvin, eh?
Wait a minute.
Benoid, eh? Article fifteen, DPW, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free cash, the sum of maybe seven thousand dollars to hire a professional to make recommendations on handicapped accessibility at the community center, or take any action in relation thereto.
Motion advised.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
I thought that there was some work done, maybe it wasn't specifically for ADA compliance, but I thought there was some work done over there to ensure that the egresses were accessible, was that not...
There's a new walk that goes from the park and onto the building that's ADA compliant, and all the pushbars that were replaced are per request from the building inspector to make sure that the building is safe, 'cause it's a big, you know, big open building in the event of an emergency.
But can I comment on that, because that has nothing to, I mean, maybe it's ADA compliant, but it was done for safety.
No, but the select board member simply asked what kind of work had been done there recently, and I was just clarifying, that was, that was the...
Is this the same as the pushbar on the front door?
No.
Seven thousand, okay, okay.
What, I talked...
Not the pushbar, I'm talking the button, handicap accessible.
I talked to the town administrator, and what we suggested to do is, we should get somebody in to make recommendations on handicap accessibility in the building and tire, and things like an electric door, some, if we're compliant with toilets, et cetera, so that we could make quality improvements. I didn't, we didn't wanna just put in the electric door without getting somebody in to make that suggestion. We may not need the money, 'cause the CMR PC, CMR PC recently came up with a grant to help cities and towns do just what we want, put the money aside for, that was all.
Well, right, and I, I guess I didn't understand that correctly, because you can also get, um, you can get people from...
The state.
The state to come in and do that, I've, I've made phone calls to do that, this, we were concerned about an actual button to come in so that that door opens. I just feel like if we spend seven, we're not gonna have another seven to actually put it in if we need it.
So my opinion is that this ensures that it gets done, if we can do it through the state or if we can do it through CMR PC, all the better, and we can reappropriate this article funding if it's approved somewhere else in another meeting. Hi, Joe, were you kind of raising your hand? But that, this ensures that it will get done. We'll try to find other, other free ways of getting it done, and then we would have the seven thousand dollars to reappropriate to actually do the installation of, am I, am I right, Joe, Gary?
You wanna speak to that, Gary?
Only if the town looks on it.
Right, right.
I just feel like it's another vague, I, I feel like it's another push-up, and it's too vague, and if it goes to a town floor like that, I don't know, they're gonna, another seven thousand dollars to see what we need to do, it needs handicap accessibility, we don't have any.
How is it gonna ensure that it gets done, this is just a study.
The study, I, I mean, ensure that the study gets done.
Oh, 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 sure, the study gets done.
So, the, the, we, we got the request to have an automatic door put in, okay? And we had concerns that, is that all the building needs, what does the building need? We definitely know the building isn't completely handicap accessible, we definitely know the building isn't, doesn't have handicap facilities, you know, to go to the restroom, we know that, we don't need a study to tell us that, but if we're gonna spend money, we wanted to make sure, we did it to make sure we were most compliant as possible, and we can't just shoot, jump, shoot from the hip and say, yep, an electric door is gonna make it more accessible. We wanted to have someone come in and say, this is the best place to spend your money, this is what's most critical for your population, that's all we wanted.
Okay, so, maybe, to Nancy's point, if, if we have two options, two, sounds like solid options, we either have the state that will come in and do this, or we have CMR PC that will come in and do this, maybe we, I don't know if we can change the article completely to say seven thousand dollars to begin the work on, we'll get these studies done for free, we'll get the, the estimates of everything and a list, a punch list of what needs to be done, and we put the seven thousand dollars then is put toward the actual work.
It's up to this group, if you wanna phrase it that way.
Is, I think, is that more in line with what you're thinking about, Nancy?
It's an old building, so you don't have to make it a hundred percent, you don't have to make it handicap accessible at all unless you do so much renovations. What I'm looking for, similar to the library doors, is there's a button, so that if somebody comes and needs that button, that they're, they have access to the building. Other things, you know, where the doorway's wide enough, and a lot of them already are, is there space in between tables set up, you know, there's three feet in between, and one step at a time, but I just, this is not how I requested it, so I'm just confused with the wording, and I think it's vague, and I think it's another, just another thing that we do all the time, here's a sum of money, and we're gonna find out if this is okay, and we never get anything done, we do two steps forward and four steps back.
I hear, do we have a quota, how much it costs to put an electric door?
That's where the seven thousand came from, and that's a high quote, the man that I talked to that did the pushbars on the door said, you know, because once you have one in, everybody will use it, so you need kind of a top-of-the-line one, but it depends on if you have the right amp service there, if you do, then that portion we don't have to pay for, if you have other equipment, then that portion you don't have to pay for, so it could cost eight hundred dollars, but it won't cost any more than this, because the estimate he gave me is like, you're probably looking between five and six, but because of the cost of everything going up, you could pad it to seven, you'd never need more than that, but it might be seven hundred. Do you know what I mean, it depends on what is there.
This, this survey for seven grand is just the community center?
Yes.
Not all the buildings?
Correct.
No.
And that number actually comes from, do you mind if I go ahead? That name, number came out of the facility study we did, and in the facility study, it does say, we are supposed to do, just as you indicated, major, when you do major rehab to the building, you should consider handicap access to the building, et cetera. We just closed the bid for seventy thousand to do the roof, and the next one in the queue, according to that facilities plan, is the building envelope, which include the doors and the windows, and at that point, we would have to get that very aspect evaluated, the six or seven thousand is the number listed in the facilities report.
Is that the same facilities report that was, had old data, old estimates in it from two thousand eighteen?
No.
Which caused the problem with historical society roof, 'cause that was an old number.
I don't...
Is it the one done in two thousand eighteen?
Twenty-one.
It was the one Ron just said.
Oh, the one that...
We got a grant for it.
That wasn't based on old, like obscure numbers at this point?
No. The roof estimate for the, the wood house predates me, the one I'm referring to is the one that was completed in FY twenty-one, it was a community compact grant, it's about eighty pages. We used it to justify emergency purchases for the boiler for your building, and that's why we prioritize the roof before anything else, because the building envelope there is shot, so what are the, the next one in the queue would be the windows and the siding, if we can fund it, and at that time, you'd probably wanna make significant investments in handicap accessible doors, and have, you know, someone make that recommendation, but that's where that came from.
I question whether some of those numbers are accurate at this point.
Several years ago, the town approved a thirty thousand dollar for the feasibility study of the center, can any of that money be used to fund this particular study?
No.
No, it needs to be done for feasibility of a senior center.
Well, that's what I mean, it's just...
Right, but it's building.
I think it's the feasibility of whether we keep that building or, or don't keep that building.
Or build new.
Or build a new one someplace else, what that, what would that look like, I think that's what that was for.
So, so through the chair, so, I mean, I believe state laws require that if you do a repair, you need to make it compliant, so has any repairs been done to that door?
Yeah, we put the pushbar in for the safety according to the building inspector, but that's not the threshold.
So you did some repairs, right, so...
They can, they're looking for major renovations, that's my memory on the threshold, and I, I can't give you a number, but I do know the law, you're familiar, you're referencing, and I don't have a baseline for you, but I'd say twenty or thirty thousand in building improvements, you have to look at seriously making sure it's ADA compliant. We spent about a grand on the door.
You might be right, though, 'cause I remember when I talked to this one of the state agents, it might be if you, if you put money towards a specific item, you have to make that item compliant, and we should check on that, that might be correct.
But we don't, I, I don't pretend to know those compliance regulations, and that's why I wanted to get somebody in to make those recommendations, to make sure it was done right, that, that's all, and not do a study, but tell us what we have to put in there, give us this back.
So it, so it sounds like we have two options to get that done for free, though?
No, we have an op, you mean the evaluation?
The evaluation.
The, CMR PC has done a, a request for proposals, it closes this spring sometime, so it's not gonna be very quick, but they are making resources available to cities within the area, which we're, and towns, which we are.
But the state has als, will also provide this service, did I hear, see somebody nod their head that...
The state does, you can, you can have somebody come in.
And is that for free?
I called on like the bathroom, for example.
Is that, is that no cost?
Do they provide plans and specs, do they do anything like that, something we could work to bid from?
No, it's one of those things that even when you talk to them, and they'll say, look, and if you're gonna, the particular question that I asked was regarding the bathroom, because there was one bathroom that has bars, but it's, it's really not situated correctly, the toilet is literally like right next to the wall, and so it's kind, it's one of those things where I was told, once you make any kind of adjustments or you're even, even inquiring, technically you don't have to bring it up unless there's so much money, but the person, anybody can counter that, anybody can, when they, when they do a formal complaint, that's when it's, then the state will look into it, and then they can force you to make adjustments if you have somebody that makes a legitimate complaint, so we're trying to avoid that.
So through the chair, so we, we have a representative in the town that is designated as our, so you've had conversations with her regarding accessibility?
I have not.
And is there a transition plan in town for all these repairs? The town's required to have a transition plan for any repairs, and it's supposed to be updated on a regular basis?
I don't know.
By, by law, you don't know if we have a transition plan?
I don't.
There's supposed to be a self-evaluation, a transition plan, which identifies all the accessibility issues, and we also have a coordinator that should be involved in any accessibilities that you should be consulting with. So none, none of that's been done or consulted or anything?
No.
Just, just money to go have an, an evaluation done?
Carol, if I may just specify, the ADA coordinator did not submit to be reappointed this year. so the position is currently vacant.
Oh, well, we need to have one. So it has to fall back to someone, because you can't have it vacant.
Yeah, nobody came forward.
So it'll probably fall to, I don't know, the building inspector or...
I just referenced the, the facility study, which calls out the ADA needs and when they have to be updated.
So I'm just referencing state and federal laws.
Not disagreeing. It's just, what I didn't want to do was put in a door opener that wouldn't be compliant or wouldn't help us, get us over the hump for those requirements which you just recommended. I wanted somebody else to tell me how to do that.
Right. And my concern is if you have somebody get to the door and they can't open it and access the building, then the town is liable for not having the ability for somebody with a handicap to access the building.
That would be all of our buildings at this point.
Well, you, but you have to have a plan. So if you don't have a plan, they have a right to go after the town, regardless of it registered.
So...
You need to have a self-evaluation, and that's going to identify any needs. And then you have, need to have a transition plan that will, will say that when, when things are repaired, they're going to be brought up to ADA compliance. And that's federal law. And the town is liable if we don't have that and somebody asks for it.
So who's responsible for making sure we have the ADA compliance?
The town.
And that falls to public works? Or would that fall, who does that fall to?
Building, in its bid time, isn't it?
I would say select board and the administrator's office. I mean, it's ultimately the town, right?
Right.
So...
So I...
So anybody could come at any time and ask for the documentation and we're required to present it.
And have you, I, I've never seen it. Are you familiar with it, Gary?
I am not, I am not. But I will say that that's the grant that I'm applying for, for all town buildings through CMRPC.
Becky, are all, all USDA loans paid off at this point?
Yes.
So, you know, full disclosure, I work for USDA. And I used to do the compliance reviews. And having had funding through the fed, the federal government, we required that you present that information to us. So at some time, the town had to have that information.
They used to have a book about that.
Correct. Because we would come in, we would require that you present that to us on our reviews.
When was the last time we did any transitions or made any improvements along those lines?
I mean, I don't know. I don't know when the last...
I was part of it, I worked 20 years ago.
No, but we, we would do compliance reviews every three or five years. I can't remember. So it had to, we had to have had some information available.
If I could on this point here, the planning office does have a binder. It's an ADA transition and assessment plan. So the document does exist.
Right.
So if you have it retained here, if you'd like to take a look at it.
But it should be referred on a regular basis on any consideration of any repairs. And it should be updated.
And perhaps the interim town administrator's office, maybe should be the keeper of that doc, of that, handout, the binder, so when these things come up.
Or when the building inspector does the building review.
Yeah. So it ends up in the planning office for some reason. That's...
So it sounds like ADA, it doesn't even sound like it. And Joe, I think you had your hand up, too, so...
I, I did. My thought was, I think the idea had been thrown out. And it probably makes a lot of sense to, you want to make sure if you do something, especially when it comes to ADA, that it's done correctly so that someone doesn't go back and say, hey, it's done incorrectly. But I would suggest that, you know, there, there is a study or whatever we want to call it, professional recommendation, that the, the language of the article also allow for the work to be done. It's not, so it's not closed and just for professional to make a recommendation. But the article language would also allow for actual purchase and installation to be made as well.
Joe, wouldn't people installing it have to be ADA compliant? If that's something that they do on a regular basis? Or can we just make sure that they are? I mean, if they do the work all the time, it's the same...
We're supposed to give them a spec. We're supposed to give them a set of specifications to follow.
So I have one idea there, because if, even if it's a push-button, a lot of push buttons are just put against the wall. But should this be on a, on a stanchion, three feet from the wall? So that you can go, you know, pass it, push the, you don't have to back up to go through there if you're in a, in an accessible chair or anything like that. So I don't think you can just say, put it against the wall, because that makes sense. They're here against the wall, but I don't know.
I don't know. I was just going by the company thing all the time.
So I'm just saying, if we had somebody, you know, you're just going to get in and install it. It's probably going to put it where you tell them to put it. And, but is that the right place? So, you know, to, to your point earlier, Harry, if we, can we reappropriate that $30,000?
Correct, that was my point.
To take it away from a feasibility study? And now, because it's been sitting there for so long, if we're going to really work on this building, can we have an article for spring that says, we're gonna, we've, we'll do this plan for $7,000. And in the spring, we can bring forward, reappropriating the $30,000 to actually do some of this work?
But I think some of the, I mean, this is years ago, and I don't know how town feels, but I think a lot of the conversation around that $30,000 was to do a feasibility study as far as, does it fiscally make sense to continue to put money into that building to bring it up to a, a complete package senior center? Or is it better to, to, you know, get it, loop it along until we can, the debt falls off or whatever, and we can go for an, an actual package and what that package would look like?
I hear you. But at some point, what you say, it's just sitting there for, and, and I'm not arguing.
Right.
I'm throwing this out there. So how long does the $30,000 sit there and nothing's being done? And, and we're still throwing money at it?
Right.
Anyway, so I think, you know, that, that's part of the equation. Do we just say, nothing for it? Now, let's do the damn feasibility study and then have a plan going forward. I know it doesn't help today. And I'm just, that's just another option that I'm throwing on the table with this, that we've got pockets of money sitting in, in places that are appropriated. And it's been there for years.
Now, when we sat down a year ago, if you don't mind if I go ahead, and started to put, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Started to put some of these articles together, like repairs to the library roof, repair, doing the community center roof. The goal was to stop the damage by cleaning up the building envelope. That was, when we looked at the facility study, and we didn't so much focus on end use for the building, just stop the damage. And that was the guide, the guide behind that at the time. The previous administration, that's what we decided.
Yeah, and I agree, even, even if the feasibility study said, we're going to build a new center someplace else, you still have to not have a leaky roof. I understand that.
So I just wanted you to stay in the thought process.
Yeah.
So the free center roof bid just came back, and the contracts haven't been signed yet. But that'll probably get done before it gets cold. The design...
It's cold.
No, really cold.
Really cold, okay.
They have a short timeline. They've got to get it done before Christmas, according to the contract. And the design is done to stop the leaks at the library roof. We made some progress.
Okay. So to Nancy's, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, to the point we made earlier, is for a lot of the grants and everything that are available, even if this could be a grant, if this project could be a grant-funded project, that we still need to have the design and feasibility in hand in order to even apply for those grants. So I, I can, I hear Nancy's decision to have something accessible now. And I also know that there are many instances where something that's meant to be accessible is actually not, is even less accessible than it was without that piece added, because it was not installed in an opportune spot or whatever. So I think there is a lot of value to having a consultant, you know, a trained consultant, look at this and provide those recommendations that then we can shop for potential grant opportunities, funding opportunities, as well as looking at additional funding sources. But I don't know.
It's not a study. We're not doing a study. We just need somebody to tell us how to do the right stuff. That's all it is.
Yeah, if I may, I'll do the chair.
CMRPC grant that we're, that we're looking into now is not to do the actual work.
Right.
It's to tell us what we need in all town buildings. So the amount, the dollar amount that we need, like Joe said, will come out of that study. Because they'll tell us what we have to do, where we have to do it, where we have to place it.
That's the self-evaluation I referred to.
Yeah, okay. And I'll, yeah, I'll look at that with David tomorrow. I did go up to the senior center yesterday, right? And the, the bathrooms are not handicap accessible. They're not. They have...
At the senior center?
Excuse me?
At the senior center?
Community center.
Not the best one in town.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. But the ones we looked at, and I mean, toilets are supposed to be 17 to 19 inches off the floor. We got a couple. We looked at them. Most of them are 14s. They're not. And we got toilets, the booths, the one that is set up, as you go right into the room to the right, the toilet is virtually on top of the handbar. It's, there's no room. So you've really got to reduce the number of toilets per room and enlarge the booths, the stalls, if you will. I'm sorry. So it's got to be done. And, and to do that, you actually have to, and sometimes relocate the drain that goes through the floor. Joe's got some problems up there. We have problems up there, not Joe, with the sewer system. It's still on a private, private system. Maybe if I had a flare with me at the time, we wouldn't be talking about it right now, but...
So you got a...
So it needs serious work. And again, as, as Joe and I, we've talked about this, the CMRPC grant is only for a study for all buildings to tell us what we have to do and where we have to do it.
Okay, so something, something that Nancy said, or somebody in this room said a little while ago, now causes me pause to say, let's work on just the one building. Because once you, you said, once you make the phone call even, or inquiry, you've kind of opened the door that now they can come after us for not doing everything. So...
No, that's not how it works. You do the self-evaluation, you identify the weak, the areas that need repairs. You're not required to make all the repairs unless you do work in the building. At that time, you would need to bring it up to code. So you don't, and you, or you have to have a plan, succession plan, to get to there. So it doesn't, it, you need to identify so you're aware of it. And if you start making repairs and putting money into it, you need to bring it up to code.
Or I think what you're thinking maybe is when I said, someone legitimately formally complains.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't, that wasn't what I heard. I heard that part, but that's not what...
Well, you can be held accountable is if you hold a meeting in a room where somebody can't get in. It's not accessible. So, so that does have to be, so you cannot hold a meeting. And like that woodhouse for a public meeting, I don't know that it meets handicap accessibility or not. But if you hold a public meeting in a building, you'd better be able to, everybody better have access to it. Or you publicly announce an alternative, you know, you accommodate them in some way to make sure that everybody has access to the meeting.
So CIPC, I, I think that you're going to have some work coming up to think about. As written, this is asking for $7,000, or some to be determined, to hire a professional to make recommendations on handicap accessibility at the scene, at the, at the community center. As it stands, this is not what was asked for, it sounds like.
If you read what Nancy wrote.
Right. It, that's, I, I did refer back to that when she said it wasn't what she wrote. I understand the intent of, of writing it this way. But I, right now, we're looking at this article. And we can't significantly change this article, I don't think. I mean, if, if we can, we can't, if we can significantly change this.
Through the chair, if I may, I would just go along, Mr. Beck, back to the suggestion. I think that covers a little bit better than what the article says. Do my suggestion.
It will bring questions up, though. What is this going to cost? And we not going to be, I mean, we saying 7,000? If we got somebody in to do it for free, assessing it for free, telling us what needs to be done, are we then asking for the $7,000? Or not to exceed $7,000 to start chipping away at that list at the community center?
Joe, that's where you, you meant?
Is that what you...
Are you asking me?
That's what, I think that's what you were asking us to add.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that, you know, there should be a plan and you should have a recommendation from a professional of what needs to be done and how. And if that can be done for, for free, then the money in the article would then allow you to actually do some of those improvements if you worded it in a way that could be both the rec, the professional recommendations plus some work and purchase.
Okay. I like it. I think that covers what's going on in this room. For this article is a huge conversation coming. And, and things that we need to start doing as a board, starting with getting probably an ADA, ADA compliance officer in place so that they can work with us on this whole self-evaluation and transition plan and all of that that Lyndon mentioned. So we need to reword this a little bit. Do you think that you have enough to do that based on our conversation? Or do you want us to craft it for you?
I would appreciate some feedback, just because we're not going to have much time to go back and forth anymore.
Sure. So to see if the town will appropriate, from available funds, free cash, a sum of money to hire, hire a professional, which may be zero, make recommendations on accessibility, and to begin...
And towards any possible repairs or...
To be, to be used for professional recommendations on accessibility and...
Upgrades.
And making upgrades, repairs.
As needed.
Does that sound? I didn't hear what you...
As needed.
As needed, yeah.
Or as identified or something.
As identified, yeah.
As identified. There you go, as identified.
Everybody put a word in.
I like that, as identified.
It's too big a word for me.
Yeah.
Do you want me to include in the explanation that there is a possibility that the, no?
You can say that?
We can say it, but that's the thing. A minute we put that in there, you might as well forget it.
So we need to amend motions for the article. Who started?
I have no idea.
Skip me the motion in a second.
Who would you amend it?
Okay, I amend my second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Okay.
Nick, it's on.
Yeah, I'm on it.
I'm on it.
And Benoit, I, thank you.
You want me to read this one?
Please.
Article 16. This comes from the Historical Society and the Department of Public Works to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, free, free cash, the sum of money to complete necessary repairs to the three chimneys at the Woodhouse building, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a motion to place?
One for due discuss.
Second.
And discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed a second here.
All right.
Oh, Lyndon, thank you. He whispered it.
Yes, sir.
So in the '21 facility study, the vendor identified problems, structural problems with both the chimney and the foundations for the woodhouse. When we had the front half of the roof replaced, including the repairs around the eyebrow window, we actually got a close look at them. All three chimneys are dangerous and need, in need of repair. And the Historical Society originally placed a article asking we replace the balance of the roof. We asked them to hold off until the chimney repairs are done. The problem with chimney repairs are, I can't tell you what that'll cost. You oftentimes don't know until you get them open. There are cracks in them, they need to be repointed. Some of them are dangerous. So much so that the vendor doing the roof work on the front half took me up there and he said, I have to brace this chimney up so my crews can work on the front. Okay, so they have to be addressed before we go to replace the roof on the back. We asked, we originally put aside a sum of 50,000. But honestly, I simply don't know. You have to get a mason and it's all handwork. Other option, I mean, we could take the chimneys down, I suppose, but...
That's what I would suggest.
We're not going to use the fireplaces anywhere.
They're not being used, right?
Garrett, well, one of them is in use all the time because of the furnace. So there are three chimneys. There's one, there's the grand one with the fieldstone.
Right.
There's one at the other, in the old living room. And then there's the one in the middle that's the furnace. So that one definitely also, with a cricket on it, that also has to be repaired. So...
Could that be replaced with a pipe?
I don't know. I don't know. Myself and the town administrator are trying to work with a local mason to get a better estimate. But you've made some calls.
I did make some calls. I have not gotten any response. And I've made several calls, especially a local mason.
I, I would put that in there, keep what needed. Unless Sheila, unless you, I mean...
Sheila Jenkins, 76 Wheel Road, and I'm also the president of the Historical Society. And we really appreciate the fact that you're addressing the needs that we have to this building, because it's been long coming. I know, Gary, you said in the past that, you know, things have been needed to get done at the woodhouse. So this is just to fix the chimneys only?
Only. And we put money aside because we just don't know. You won't know until you get them open. It could come in at 10,000 and get them all repaired. It could come in at 30,000 and get them all repaired. It's not something you can get an estimate for. It's all handwork.
Right. We're just, you know, concerned because the roof, I mean, the eyebrow window area, you know, has definitely been fixed. We still have the rest of the roof to do, and the garage roof is still leaking. So.
Well, this is a town building, so I think that we can make a decision to only repair the chimneys, the chimney that is required, and does it need to be a chimney-looking piece, or can a pipe be used, a PVC pipe?
No, PVC. I understood.
Because then you just need a boot for it.
Not PVC.
It would need a boot, you know, and, and it's not, you're not doing masonry work at that point, you're just doing roof work. So, but, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry, you're the chair.
They look like PVC.
She's the chair.
But they do from the outside.
It's a pipe.
But, so I think, I think it's our decision to do that, and the important piece is?
To the chair. To Joe's point, you cannot get up and fix that roof until you do something with the chimneys. Because I saw them, we inspected the foundation, we inspected the chimneys. You lean on, my thought, you lean on that chimney, it's fallen over.
Well, that'll stop.
So you're not going to get, you're not going to get a roofer up there to repair it.
Right.
There's a chance that you might have to take, strip the roof and take a piece of it off to repair the chimney. Yes, they need the chimney for the heating system. We don't know what kind of shape the flue is in, we don't know if a pipe can be inserted, so. So what are you saying? And then we got to start, we got to start with that.
And it's, the work, the, the environment for that type of work has changed. If you've noticed around town when they're building new houses, you're not seeing chimneys.
I see chimneys. Sir?
I'm going to throw this out there, and it may be well beyond the scope, but just for thought, and Gary or Joe, I can work with you, but, you know, I'm, I'm on the school committee for Bay Path, and it's a masonry shop. I don't know if this goes well beyond what they're able to do, but I would certainly help make phone calls to find out if that's something the masonry program at Bay Path could potentially help out with. Now, the only thing I would caution is that, you know, you're dealing with the school and students and class time, so the schedule may not be exactly what we would prefer in an ideal situation, but it, you know, it would be cost of material only.
It's a good resource. We've used it in the town before, so I would certainly support that.
I think that's a great idea.
So I can work with Joe and Gary and make that call.
The one, don't fix the other two.
We're not fixing the other ones. All right, so I.
Would you pay 50 grand to fix your house?
I'd be go, oops.
He's got a PVC pipe.
All right, I'm never going to live that way. I know I won't.
The fire chief could attest to it, but he's no idea.
That's a good idea.
All right, so how do we re-craft this?
Well, we did, we're not going to say a sum of money, and we're still going to look at the repairs of the chimneys, and we're going to need it for materials, so I think.
You're just.
I guess the only question is, do we keep in three chimneys? Well, we should probably keep in three because it would include removal if we don't repair.
The necessary repairs or removal of?
I would say repairs to one chimney, removal of the other two. Because you got to get that out there that we're removing the two.
Throw that in.
Now you're going to be prepared for, you know.
Pushback.
Pushback on that, thank you. I wasn't the one who was going to use it, thank you.
The chimney's gone?
Yeah.
I think at this point, we just want to get.
Right, you guys aren't able to use them anyway.
No, no.
I mean.
I mean, even in a public building, you can't light a fire.
For what, for what they've got in there, they wouldn't want the soot or anything, so I mean, that's the whole thing.
So here, here's my thing. I don't know how much it's going to take, cost to take down a chimney.
Exactly.
Cap it off, and go do all the things that needs to be done if we remove them, versus if we could get Bay Path in there, would the cost of doing that for three chimneys be less than taking down two? So I, that's why I want to make sure that we.
It's all open ended, yeah.
Are open enough in here to be.
Believe me, I had no, no desire to spend that amount of money. It's just, it's just, there's no way to estimate it.
Nothing is what we want to be spending anymore.
To the chair.
Yes.
Joe, does it make sense, and Joe, does it make sense to have them also take a look at the failing foundation?
The foundation?
Still keeping that dollar amount the same, but if Bay Path has a crew up there.
I'll be candid, I would get an engineer to look at the foundation, but I would take advantage of the masonry students to repair the steps before somebody falls.
Yeah, the steps do, so. You should add that wording into, into the article.
The other problem is on the front corner.
I saw that.
Where you've got the, the columns.
Right.
There's one, when the roofer was there, they actually had to build an assembly to hold up the roof, because the mason, masonry piece will no longer hold up that one column. So that's got to be shored up as well. These are all critical things I would do.
So we could just add, and any other masonry repairs as needed.
Yeah, but the foundation, I agree.
Yes, that's the one to do.
Make it broad enough.
It's just going to get, give them 24 hours to get this one. Last thing, masonry repairs or just?
Are we going to say masonry repairs? Because they'll all be related to, right?
I would say masonry.
And if there's anything left, we don't spend it, and we.
We build a fire pit, and we all have a party in the backyard.
Okay. Yes.
Through the chair. I know that the interior, because the way that Carolyn Seaman, our vice president of historical, wrote two separate requests. In regards to the interior, I guess that would just, since that was already a project that has already been initiated.
I've actually gone up through, through Mr. Buckland, with his people that have gone up there.
Okay.
Took the measurements of the ceiling panel.
Okay.
We have, we have a fix for that.
Oh, good.
Again, inspected it yesterday, because I had to take pictures of the chain up on the railing for the, for the attic.
Sure.
And also, I did see through your request, I believe somebody asked for carpeting in the hallway.
The flooring had to be removed.
We do have to.
Where the accident was.
That's kind of a special funny hard color stuff to follow, so if I want to get something.
Right, and that's an old cork from.
Yeah, so we're going, we're trying to find something, the eight inch, the eight inch squares, but the same thickness, and we fix it because it's covered with a rug.
Right, that's what we put there.
So we feel that could be done in-house.
Okay, great. Because, you know, of course, the Smithsonian's coming to town.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, we are planning and are going to be, be the Historical Society an extension to the exhibit. So I don't know if the ceiling panel can be taken care of by number four, this.
The 300th might give you a rug.
Yeah.
Well, they're getting money for it, right?
She's the 300th, too.
Right, so you're on it too, right? So. If it's, if it's part of that thing.
It's getting late, we move it along.
Did you have, did you get the rewrite that we did? Okay, so I do need amendment to the motion.
I approved the amendment, he seconded it.
I missed that.
Yep.
I must have been shouting. All right, roll call.
Nichols' eye.
Yalvin's eye.
In Benoit's eye. Article seventeen, sponsored by the Department of Public Works, to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article eleven dated November eighteen, 2021, in the sum of $8,000 for replacement of the poolhouse doors and to rekey the main access to the building or take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Wait one second.
Discussion?
So we're asking if the libraries got funds to help pay for a $997 printer.
You're correct.
Shouldn't we be asking what, if there's any funds, that is a revolving fund, and potentially a touchpad's, probably not the best thing if we've got turnover with summer help, and blah, 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 blah. I'm just saying, shouldn't they pay for some of it? Because maybe if they paid for some of it, they might make their people take better care of it.
Could I speak to some of that, please?
Yes, please.
All right, so, all the money that we asked for is money already allocated for the sewer. We made repairs to the sewer, replaced all the toilets, and we had money left over. So they're not asking for any new funds. We replaced doors previous, these are additional doors that are rusted away because of the drainage problem. And they actually asked for the touchpad because giving out keys becomes problematic. Because they have so much transient help.
You handed out at the beginning of the summer, and you get it back at the end of the summer.
But you also risked somebody copying it and being difficult.
Okay, yep.
So these are just combination access?
No touch, no.
But why can't you use like a combination? You can change it anytime.
This is what they asked for.
Because that must be much, much less expensive, a keypad.
Believe it or not, the locks and the keys are cheap. All the money's in the doors.
It's $2,000 for locks.
It's reallocation of funds that were already approved for, essentially approved for poolhouse repairing. I mean, it was.
For sewer repair.
Right, right, right.
This is way different. And my only thing is, is could we maybe use part of that $8,000 to reallocate when we have a budget shortfall next spring for, I don't know, snow and ice?
Or a pump, or a valve. Even with the, with the poolhouse, isn't that pump ready to go?
I don't know.
So these are things that, you know, I know it's already been allocated, but with the way that budgets are done in this town, we always can use funds other places where we've cut.
So does the recreation department have them?
That's the thing, they should, I, I, that's why I said I think we should.
What was the total amount that that 8,000 was included?
It was a lot.
$6,000 for four doors and $2,000 for a lot of.
What was the original?
The original allocation was like 40 to 60 grand, I think.
Karen, do you know what those have, balance?
No, 30.
No.
30. We TV'd the line, and now she came up with another way to make it repair.
The reserve?
We're going to have to take a wall down.
Fund for recreation?
Or for this article?
That would be left in this article?
For the pool.
It's a revolving fund.
The revolving fund for the recreation. Do you know what their funds are?
I don't, I don't know what's left in the article. I can tell you what's left in this article.
What's left in the article?
$24,759 that were transferring.
So a lot more than the eight.
Yeah, the next article, the next article.
Which is what you.
$16,000, too.
What, what, what was that original, what'd you say, was it $30,000?
Joe thinks it was about 30.
We didn't spend it all.
Right.
Before we did the sewer repair, we did some TV inspection, and we were able to come up with another solution, because we're going to have to take a wall down, and it could be more expensive than we originally thought, than our original budget. And we were able to get the toilets in the building to function throughout the whole season without incident. So once we got through whole season, we were happy with our repairs, we looked to reallocate some of the funds. We, myself and Gary were contacted by the folks who run the pool. They have a couple of problems there. Number one, there's drainage coming off the parking lot from behind community hall and behind the police station, that's actually flooding the building. That's, so we went there after the rain, there's water inside the building. So we have to address that, that's the next article down. It's also caused the water heater available, that's separate. While we were there, we found three doors that were rusted to the point where they were no longer securable, and they needed to be replaced, hence the article you're reviewing right now. At the time, we were there discussing all this with the recreation director, they said I have a lot of turnover and a lot of transient help, I'd like to come up with a different solution besides keys, either fobs, and we suggested going with the passcode because it's much cheaper. Does that answer your question?
No, I have another question. Of the 30, the 30,000 original amount, where was it appropriated from? What, where did the funds come from?
Well, that's a good question. It could be free cash, I don't know. I think it was free cash last year.
It was free cash.
I'm done at 9%.
Not water and sewer enterprise.
No.
No, it didn't come from water and sewer.
Can't come from town.
No, it did come from yours.
It's all Tommy caring about, okay, we can move.
Tommy's like, can that balance be put into?
The original amount was 35,000 from free cash, November 18th, 2021.
I don't think Article eleven is the correct reference.
Article eleven?
Article, from, so it's referencing.
What this references?
November 18.
2021.
Do you, do you have it as Article eleven, Becky?
Oh, no, that's, it's Article nine.
Sorry, that was my error, I'll fix it.
Article nine.
Could catch.
Of November 18th, 2021.
Do I make up for that pipe thing?
Never.
You redeemed yourself.
I'm just anticipating a question coming off the floor with this. What's to stop it from happening again? And should you include more money to divert the water so that it doesn't happen?
That's the next article.
Oh, okay, all right.
Maybe we should have done that before we replaced the door.
I didn't set the order.
But we could, we could reorder this, right?
Or you could just say. Or you could just say it's in the next article.
As long as, as long as it passes, we can replace it, yeah.
Karen?
I, I just, I just think that we should be looking at recreation, see if they can put in some money for this, so that they have some skin in the game.
Well, we're not placing an amount.
I get it, but if we're going to ask them, we can't say to appropriate, we have to say to reallocate funds from Article eleven, or funds from, or other, however you, however you, blah, 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 that crap, and then you put it in that way.
How about, if you, the, the doors are deteriorated because of town property.
Drainage.
Drainage. So we pick up that part, and if the pool wants to have a change in their lock system, that's their convenience, that's.
That makes sense.
Yep, I agree with that.
I mean, that, I mean, that does seem fair. I don't care either way, the paper or not.
But we just have to reorder them.
But I mean, that's reasonable, because, you know, the damage was caused, bad drainage, and for doors, they're definitely going to, so if they want to upgrade, then maybe they can throw in an extra to upgrade, whatever. I mean, how much was it?
$2,000 for the lock.
I'm more concerned about the pump, but that's just me.
That one will pay forward with water and sewer, don't worry.
I mean, that's just, because there's a question on, question here. It's a solution, that's not my decision.
All right.
If anybody, it's up to the people that place the article with the motion.
And I think so.
Yep, and Leah's seconded it.
So, I readjust that to the town paying for damages due to flood control and any other improvements done by recreation.
I think you would just take out the rekey, right?
Yeah.
6,000 from the article and 2,000 from the revolving fund?
Or we don't even have to do that, we just say reallocate from, for the replacement of the poolhouse doors, period, and if they want to do it, then that's on them.
So you just take out the rekey.
Okay, so we're seeing that out together and we're gonna change the amount to 6,000.
That makes much more sense. But you gotta get Leah a second.
That's fine.
She's tired.
All right, any further discussion?
Lock eye.
Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye, thank you. Article 18, DPW, to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article 9 pool house sewer line dated November 18th, 2021 to purchase supplies for the installation of drainage to prevent flooding in the building or take any action in relation thereto.
Nay. I make motion, please.
Any discussion? We did just discuss.
We just discussed it all.
All right, vote.
Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye. Article 19, DPW, to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article 12, library heater AC unit dated November 18th, 2021 in the sum of $5,000 for updates and repairs to two primary doors at the library or take any action in relation thereto. The main doors are both upstairs and downstairs, are worn from constant use and are in need of replacement. Sum is 5,000.
Do I have something to take?
That door up there.
Order, uh, took place. Motion, second.
The main door.
Discussion. No discussion?
Lock eye.
Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye. Article 20, DPW, to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article, oop, did I just do that?
No.
Article 12, same, same article, dated November 12th, 2021, in the sum of $10,000 for landscape updates at the library or take any action in relationship thereto.
Motion, please.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So.
Who's gonna maintain it once this?
It says one year, right, a budget.
Can I just speak to this briefly, please, to the chair? We got a lot of complaints from the public about the appearance of the library, especially from a lot of the elderly. They were embarrassed by what the building looks like. And in addition to that, if you look at the facility study, because of the clappards are on the outside of the building, they suggest that we cut back a lot of the stuff significantly. So we just wanted to put some money, cut it up, cut it back and clean it up. There is no money to maintain. We don't fund buildings and grounds for, for anything here in town. So it would just get it away from the building and clean it up. We've, in the most, the budget that's on the table for next spring, we've asked for money for grounds. And this year, we were able to get some ARPA funds to hire some temporary help to offset that. And it's gotten a little better, but I, I don't, I can't speak to how we'll be able to maintain it until next spring's budget's passed.
Would it be done in-house, though?
Well, no, I'd probably put that out. I'd have somebody come in and do that. We don't have the horses.
So you just gotta rip all these shrubs out?
Cut, I think cut them back.
No, I didn't say that. I said rip them all out.
Oh, would you like?
So it doesn't damage the buildings like it is right now?
Exactly. I'm gonna go with significantly cut them back. I don't know if I'd rip them all out.
Yeah, okay, right there.
All right.
I guess Skip is volunteering with this.
Yeah, I mean, just come up with a truck and. Roll a chain around them and rip them right out.
I'm serious, though, we, we do get a lot of calls from folks in town.
I guess I'm just concerned that is 10,000 really gonna do it when we spent 15,000 to move along uptown? Beautification of the town common cost $15,000 five years ago and this is gonna be down to 10.
That was flowers and, like molasses and everything else.
But Lyndon hit the nail on the head. The biggest challenge for us is maintaining stuff and we just don't have the resources. The people aren't there.
How much is left in this?
26,896 dollars.
And this is taking 21 out of that.
Yeah, so the balance, if you take both of those, it's taken 15 out of it. So that would leave 11,896 still in that article.
Can I just say briefly, we did really well on the public bid for this. We replaced all three heater, air conditioning units, the rooftop units, they brought in a crane. We spent $65,000, we budgeted 90. The public bid process, we did extremely well. It took us a long time to get the units, but we got lucky. So that, all this is just leftover money from that.
I think Carol's concern is, is 10,000 or not? Is that your concern?
Well, we'll do what we can. We'll start, do as much as we can.
Tell them, oh, yes.
If we're doing the rip.
If they happen to be gone.
Skip will take care of it.
We'll know where it happened.
Yeah, we'll put the cleats in the other side of town, I'm gonna take care of it tonight.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Lock eye.
Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye. Article 21, ad hoc, by law committee, to see if the town will vote to amend revolving funds, general bylaw, according to the document on by with town clerk's office or take any action thereto. Motion, please. Do I have a second?
Wait a second for discussion, I think.
Okay.
What is the discussion, sir?
I'm, I know that this had been brought up at the annual and we didn't have any documentation or anything and I guess I'm concerned that has they, have things been worked out? Because there were a lot of concerns in the spring. And it seemed like has legal reviewed everything? There was a lot of back and forth as far as.
I don't know, this is the.
Could we have Peter Crain speak on that?
Sure.
See how he's here.
He's not.
Better chair if I may.
Okay, Peter and, and or Anita, I think the, for some reason, it hadn't gone through legal. And I remember that Dan Hayes was a little concerned with one of them being a revolving fund. And I'm not gonna speak to the correct one because I don't remember.
As I recall, it was RDIC.
Correct, okay.
And I have found nothing in MGL to suggest that this is improper, that this is an improper account because RDIC does not have a specific account set aside by other sections of mass general law, which is the, which is what would override.
Has KP Law come back to us with any? Have they reviewed the bylaw?
Yes, they have.
And did they come back with any changes?
I would have to go back through it. I, I would say nothing substantive, but this is the version post-legal review.
And even if we vote these in now, they would not take place until July 1st of next year?
Correct, because then it is an annual town meeting that the funds are actually annually established. The fund does not exist until annual town meeting allocates them and sets aside the maximum spending limit.
So have I missed a, a reason why then it would be here if we aren't gonna do anything until annual town meeting?
Because if it's not done until annual town meeting, then we cannot create and allocate the accounts then. Remember that after this, assuming this passes town meeting, it's an extra three months for the attorney general to review and the, and the bylaw does not take effect until attorney general review is complete. So that if we did not do this now, then when annual town meeting comes, we cannot create the revolving funds.
I think, I think this article is creating the revolving fund because they don't exist. At the end, it's gonna get reviewed and then at the annual town meeting, you set a spending limit, which, which, like what we do for the tax title and the recreation. So it'll be established with this and it'll be verified and vetted by the attorney general, if I'm saying that right, Peter. Then at the annual town meeting, we'll say they can spend up to $5,000 for FY24 in this revolving fund.
If I may, Peter, can you clarify, this is, oh, these, both these boards bring in some fees? Is that, collect some fees and need to pay out posting fees and everything, is that?
That, that's exactly what this is for. And also potentially, there could be consultants' fees involved, certainly with the earthworks board, probably with RDIC as well. There are a variety of ways to spend the money once it happens. The problem is today, we have nowhere to put the money that we get from applications.
Right.
And so we've been, uh, we've been sidestepping, shall we say, the proper process.
I know that there have been cases, yeah. So these are, essentially what would be going into these are the fees that are collected from applicants that then are being used for a purpose, whether it's posting, um, salaries, um, legal fees.
Yes, any administrative uses, things of that nature.
Yeah, so it's really whatever you, the groups are collecting from their fees, then they, they're permitting fees or whatever, right? Applications, that's permitting fees.
Yes, there's no allocation from the general fund for either of these accounts.
Peter, could we?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you email me a copy so I could send it to the finance committee so that we could have it before we request, before we have to vote favorably or unfavorably?
Yeah, absolutely. I apologize for not getting it out sooner. The day that I submitted the article request is the day that I sent it to Anita and I forgot to send it to, to Tamika to forward to all of the parties here until today. So you should have it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just sort of speaking for Tamika.
Thank you. So the RDIC has general oversight of the property. However, the actual site plan authority is the HPDD review board, the Heights Plan Development District Review Board. My question is this, is this amendment robust enough to allow for the HPDD to also share a revolving fund?
Dave, I'm sorry, but Zoom audio is completely cut out.
What he's asking for is HPDD has rights to do with the.
Site plan approval.
Site plan?
Which would have been used for consult.
So is this robust enough to have both RDIC and HPDD?
And the fast answer is yes, because HPDD is a subcommittee of the RDIC.
No, it isn't.
There it is.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's a point, if I could, so the RDIC, the HPDD bylaw provides for the membership composition of the HPDD review board with the appointments being made by the RDIC.
Okay, I, I, I accept that I could be wrong on that. So then the question is, would you like to see it as two different line items? One for RDIC, one for HPDD? Or would you like it as a single line item that does, that supports both RDIC and HPDD? Although that's, being a separate committee, might have different challenges.
Well, I just mentioned that, that the RDIC did appoint the HPDD. HPDD.
Yes.
Well, that is the case. It's not, I don't, in my opinion, it's not a separate, per se. It has a separate membership composition and it includes more than just the RDIC members. It includes other members from different boards and commissions who constitute the HPDD.
Correct.
So if.
But so do other boards in town, like the bylaws, the, the planning board bylaw subcommittee.
But they don't have.
They don't have revolving.
They don't have revolving fund.
Or need a revolving fund.
Correct.
No, but I'm just saying as an example of something that is a subcommittee that has other members than just.
I only raised a question just to be conservative, to make sure that the HPDD board is properly accounted for because they had revolving funds, because they will, they did hire a consultant for the Heights, for the 142-unit housing development, they did hire a consultant to review for peer review. So there was an allocation there. Anyways, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So, so I just wanna round back to this. How do we want to address HPDD with respect to the revolving funds bylaw?
Not one bit at all.
I think we'd better ask legal.
I know, it sounds like this all needs to be sent back to legal for another review and it's not ready.
I personally think they should separate that article, one for RDIC and one for earthworks.
Well, it is two, two, oh, separate the article, yeah, okay.
But that's me.
Um, Anita, is that kosher to make multiple amendments to the same bylaw? I don't know what the AG's office would think about it, that's all.
I'm not sure, I, I mean. I would think that they would prefer it to be all in one. I also think that it's something that, um, just in the course of, of getting the warrant done, that legal would be willing to answer that question about the HPDD right away.
I mean, I think, indeed, Carrie, you guys probably have a better idea as far as how HPDD works, but they, do they collect fees or is it RDIC that's collecting the fees?
RDIC.
So RDIC, so RDIC would be collecting the fees, so basically we need, we would need both on the same account if HPDD is able to spend some of those fees.
Yeah, but they work for the RDIC, so they get to build RDIC and let RDIC pay. I mean, I don't hear why they're on there. First, that's my own opinion.
If I may, that, that's not exactly how it works. The H, the matters that the HPDD handled as far as, say, this HCH project, the RDIC was done involved with that. Technically speaking, the, the check was payable to the town of Rutland. So, and because there's no accounts that exist, you know, it, it, so it wasn't specifically made payable to a board, but all of the work, the voting, the consulting was done by the HPDD review board, if that makes sense. Yeah, I'm just trying to think how, I mean, who is ultimately collecting the fee? You know, in, in the scheme of that, that board for the, for that property, let's say, who is eligible to collect the fees? What fees are they collecting? And who's? In my experience, RDIC has never collected a fee. At this point, HPDD has, okay, but RDIC has not had applications before them that would necessitate a fee. We haven't.
So just on the fee, so the HPDD bylaw has a site plan review fee with the HPDD review board being the permit granting authority. That was a $2,500 fee for site plan review. Based upon the success of that, the next level is the site plan review fee done by the HPDD board, which has the authority to issue the permit for $5,000. So in both cases, the permit granting authority is the HPDD review board. The fee is set up for their site plan review. They did the work on the site plan review, they hired the consultant. So who's taking the?
So RDIC does not need a revolving fund, HPDD does.
RDIC needs a revolving fund for different reasons. Because they have general legal expenses for the site as a whole, for the disposition of the property and the remaining two parcels. And also any other matter that's relevant to the general disposition of the site.
Well, what's going in there to pay for?
Right.
They don't have an in. The, the, the committee needs to, in order for a revolving fund to work, it has to come from somewhere.
Like a self-fulfilling fund.
Right.
So I think that they've had special, special articles, special condominium articles or free cash allocations or whatever to fund, to set aside, you know, articles to fund for legal or for advertising or whatever. But those are articles that are very clear for a purpose that the town is allocating and not that they're receiving fees from. Anybody.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the, the town had an RFP for the property. Money came in for the RFP that went to the IDIC to do certain work items to dispose of the property. Does that come under this concept?
With my understanding, it would have gone to the general fund because an account didn't exist and all of the bills that we pay for RDIC come from the article. Everything that comes to, goes to pay through that.
Which was an allocation of, of free cash.
Correct. Okay.
Is the HPDD, did I say it right? Is that a lifetime committee? My understanding when it was created was that it would be along until the Rutland Heights was totally developed. Then it would go away. Because then RDIC would become the overriding structure for the Rutland Heights and all the other business property in town. So I'm not sure, I guess from a layman's perspective, why we have two committees, one getting fees, one not getting fees, and the one has to send the paperwork to the other one, it's like redundant. So I'm trying to figure out here why we can't just kind of collapse one into the other and have one revolving and one name.
Change the zoning bylaw to make that happen.
What's that?
We would have to mod, we'd have to amend the zoning bylaw to make that happen.
Maybe that's where we should do that.
Because the zoning bylaw defines the, both the, well, defines the, the HPDD review board and its scope and authority.
And I guess to Harry's point a little bit, RDIC is industrial commission as a whole, not specifically the Heights property. So in theory, RDIC could potentially be working with other properties for industrial development or the economic development committee or something to, and at that point, I assume that they would be potentially bringing in fees if they were involved in other parts.
It's not a pure committee of its own, it's a subcommittee of RDIC.
HPPD, yes, HPDD.
So.
My question is.
Why do we have a lifetime subcommittee on a piece of property that will have been developed? When RDIC was, I was on the original, one of the original RDICs. I served many, many years ago on it for years. And I'm trying to figure out why RDIC can't be responsible for that. Why do we have to have a subcommittee that now reports to a committee, that now sends the bills, sends this, that? I don't, I don't get it, it's like redundant to me. Maybe I'm missing something here.
The job of the HPDD review board requires specialized knowledge, which is why it's not just RDIC members. They need planning board input and they need input from other boards as well. I don't remember what the exact composition is, but they need specialized knowledge to ensure that they are doing site plan review appropriately. And that knowledge is outside the RDIC proper.
No, I understand that, Peter, by me through the chair. But once the property is developed, there's no more site review, right?
Oh, what, once the property is developed, then RDIC can disband HPDD review board and it will not practically exist any longer.
But do we have to do that by a removing of the bylaws?
No, we just, we, we, the RDIC can disband the HPDD review board at any time that it so chooses. And it'll just have a section of bylaw that is never ever used because it's never, it's not appropriate any longer. Some point in the future, someone could discuss amending zoning bylaw, but. But in this context, I don't think that's, that's timely.
Is HP, HPDD then? Is HP, HPDD then an advisor to RDIC? No.
No, it's a permit granting authority.
It's an approving committee.
Permit granting authority.
So the decision that was drafted, they approved it. They put the conditions on it. They did the heavy lift of reviewing the site plan.
Okay. So, but do they need to be the people that are moving the money? Do they need to be the people that are receiving the fees and, and why can't then that be, they're doing work on behalf of RDIC, but RDIC is doing the funding? Because right now, it doesn't make any sense for RDIC to have a revolving fund, from what I'm hearing right here. It sounds like, why does HP, HPDD then not do those collecting of the fees and paying of the invoices? It goes to HP.
But they're the ones that get permits.
They do though. We do, I mean, I guess the waters are muddy. I'm the person for both. But it's not like the HPDD sends bills to the RDIC and then the RDIC pays it.
Not, not send, but.
Because in this particular circumstance, there was an account established for this particular project from which the developer deposits money into, and that is where we pay these fees from.
Right.
But they're not running it through the RDIC.
Yes.
So, Demika, let me understand. RDIC doesn't handle any of the, the money from the HPDD. So they don't really need a revolving account.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only question with, with that is I just don't know how it would be funded. And Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't think of, I don't believe RDIC is a permit granting authority. So I can't imagine what, like what type of application would come in where they would get funds from, if that makes sense.
I would think that the question should be looked at to make sure that the right, our revolving funds are going to the right group so that if the, if the RDIC needs one, they have one. Maybe that's a question for town council, just to double check that.
My, my understanding was. Dan had a problem.
Through the chair. My understanding is it has to be a, a permit granting authority to have a revolving fund. So if RDIC doesn't grant a per, and, and I'm, again, this is a legal thing. I'm not 100% positive that that's what my recollection of all things.
I think that there was some confusion discussion because for like recreation, safe place, they're not permit granting, but they have their own revolving fund because they're program running.
Right, so they're self, self sufficient.
Right. And, right. And so I think that that was one of the gray areas for RDIC with, with, that we didn't have clear time from legal feedback as far as, or from Dan as far as what, what the concerns were. And I don't know that we've, I don't, I've never been involved in a conversation with RDIC and/or HPDD to, to better understand what they, what their, their needs are, what they think their needs are and how we can make all of that work.
I mean, I think it's appropriate that somebody has to get the fees. Somebody, who gets the million dollar check when they buy the property? Somebody has to receive the money and somebody has to pay the bills. But if it's somebody, then it's not everybody. So we don't need two organizations to do that. That's what I was trying to get at. To me, that's confusing to the town. It's almost like combining water and sewer. God almighty.
Amen.
Not your fault, Joe. Not your fault. No, I'm not blaming you.
They're both financially fine, right?
Now it's.
Yeah.
This sounds like.
But RDIC has been before the finance committee looking for that fund over several years because they have other funds and they do do other things on other parts of the property down here.
But are they collecting fees?
Yeah. I don't know where they got the mon, I'm not sure what the money came from, but they.
HPDD does.
They got allocated from the general fund.
And that's recreation and safe place collect fees. And permitting is a permitting fee. So, I mean, I can see that that's not really gray.
No, but I meant gray as far as permitting, permitting group versus a.
But is it a permitting group or is it a fee collecting group? It's just a fee, a permitting fee is usually.
The revolving, revolving funds, there are many different revolving funds, different chapters. So this is a different one than the one that.
Recreation.
Recreation and, and safe place F. That's 53E and F and a half and.
Right.
All of that.
Three quarter.
Yeah.
I don't have any solutions.
Maybe somebody need, just needs to read our bylaw that we voted on and see what it says.
What we're working on here, Tommy.
I guess it's best to go with the facts rather than us making assumptions.
Hi, Chairman.
Go ahead, get somebody else.
Mike's training.
Hello? Oh, Mr. Sullivan.
Hi, Mike Sullivan here. I'm kind of coming into the tail end of this, but the RDIC does collect fees. And the, in my opinion, the HPDD review board does not need a revolving fund. Basically, what they do is any bills they get, they send to us and we pay, but we don't receive that for it. So that's, that's the way we do it for the last year since we were in. So I, I believe, and I've asked before for the RDIC to have a revolving fund.
I think we got it. We can look at it.
That's the Sullivan saying we do not, the HPPDD does not need a revolving fund. Is that right, Mike?
That's my opinion. They don't need a revolving fund because any, any voices they get, they send to us and we pay them out of the, either the fee schedule that we have with applicants or however they have to pay. Does that make sense?
Yep, does to me.
So we collect fees much like the planning board does and we disperse them as simple as that.
I think we have to have legal look at the bylaw for HPDD and RDIC and then look at it to see how this goes.
Okay, so what about you?
My, my recollection is that the by, the zoning bylaw is silent on financial matters other than has the power to, 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 to create a fee structure.
But is the whole basis of this conversation, should the HPDD review board have a revolving fund?
No, the other way around.
We want to make sure that RDIC and HPDD have access to this and make sure that it's legal.
Okay. Well, I believe RDIC should have one and HPDD does not have one.
Right. So I've, we've got every scenario on the floor right now with this and I don't, I'm not hearing a consensus about.
Sounds like they should be reviewed by legal to see whether they're high and they're not.
Can I ask a question? Why is it that, that there is an opinion that the RDIC can't or shouldn't have?
No, it's not RDIC. It's HPPD or whatever you want to call them, the group.
Okay, so let's take HPDD off the table. Should the RDIC have a revolving account?
If you're handling money, yes, you should.
Okay. Does anybody agree with that?
Is it legal?
I thought the, the authority has to be a permitting, has to issue permits. And what Dave just said is that the HPDD issues the permits, not RDIC. So that's where we need, I, I, in my opinion, I think we need a legal opinions as to what, you know, what constitutes a revolving fund. Do you, you know, issues the, my understanding was that it has to issue a permit. It has to be a permit issuing authority to have a revolving fund.
So, I agree that we need to have legal look.
I don't, I don't know that legal aspect, but if you recall, we, we brought this up at the last town meeting and just agreed that this was going to be looked into and determined whether the RDIC could be a holder revolving account. I mean, I would take it that there is.
Right, right.
For signing purchases and selling property. But I guess it hasn't.
It's a different.
Alright, so the motion on the floor though is to place this article.
Well, I, I guess my opinion is you should place a revolving, HPDD review board in the bylaw. I don't see a reason for that. That's my opinion.
I would like, I would like to leave it. I think I made both replace it, did I not?
You did. Yes, I can do.
But hold it until I get legal definite answer from legal, whether the way it should be.
Are we signing off on this tonight though?
No, we're not. We've got two.
Or, and we sign.
You're signing, you're signing the warrant on Tuesday, November 1st.
So if we don't have the information by Tuesday, November 1st.
Legal, put it on there.
It stays.
We can have follow up conversation at that meeting also, right, for any outstanding questions?
Before we sign anything.
I mean, yeah.
And then remove it?
Yeah.
I think you can remove it before you vote to sign and post it. I wonder why you couldn't.
So can I withdraw my second and, and conception, I mean, straw poll, it sounds like we have questions that the board's not opposed to it, but there's questions that we would feel better having.
Legal question. That's what I said. That's why I pulled my.
Right, 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 right. Oh, I didn't hear you pull yours. I, okay.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I thought, oh, I didn't, okay.
That we can hold this one until we get legal review answers and just mark it that we definitely need to officially place it or not.
Would it be better to keep it here and pull it before we sign? Because if we pull it tonight, we have to put it back on.
Right. So I think what legal was saying is just don't vote to place it right now.
Don't vote to place it.
Hold it. And then on Tuesday, if we have an answer from legal, you can make a, a motion to place it that time before you sign it.
Hold it. Not pull it, hold it. Got it. Okay. Alright, so we are.
Holding this until.
Holding this until.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Buckeye.
Nickel's eye.
Galvani.
Wait, Benoit.
Benoit, I, thank you.
Now you're going to tell Peter, he's going to get this done.
Peter, yeah, this needs to go through legal before Tuesday.
And I think with the Rutland Heights, like RDIC and HPDD zoning by law also to make sure that legal has all that information. Because I think some.
Yep, I'll get them the information they need.
Great, thank you.
Article 22, sponsored by the select board to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of GLC 41-1B to make the elected position of town clerk and appointed position of town clerk and further to authorize the select board to provide for the appointment of such office for a term not to exceed three years unless otherwise provided by law, provided however that any such change be subject to approval by the voters of the town of the next annual town meeting, of town election in accordance with the provisions of GLC 41-1B and provided that this vote be taken at least 60 days prior to the said annual town elections or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to post.
Is there a second? Discussion.
I don't, I don't have enough information as far as that. This totally blindsided me, excited me. And then to hear that kind of, there was no conversation with the current town clerk or anybody as far as the, the, we, we as a board had no conversation with town clerk, assistant town clerk to understand the pros and cons of both sides and everything. So I don't, I, I don't necessarily disagree that standard, to standardize all paid positions as hired versus elected or whatever. But at the same point, I feel like the timings, there was, I feel like there should be a lot more conversation for it before just placing it and giving it to the voters without having had information sessions or this seems like a bigger piece of town government than just some of the other pieces. And I think it need, reading it, it needs, it sounds like ideally would be at fall town meeting or not take effect if we're at annual town meeting, it would not take effect until the following year because it needs to be done 60 days prior to the.
Meeting.
Town election. So currently, the annual meeting is two days before the annual election. So that wouldn't meet that 60 days. So I would assume if we were to hold it until the annual town meeting, that it wouldn't take effect until the following year or, or whatever. I also know there's bylaw changes considering rearranging all of the structure of town meeting and town election. But that's where I'm coming from. It's not necessarily that I disagree with it. I just feel like I don't have enough information and haven't had enough conversations as a board to understand it.
Understood.
Through the chair. So, I mean, I, I agree and I, I mean, it seems like something that you'd have it and the timing's kind of weird. Because it's something, a change like this, you'd think you would have at the, you know, annual town meeting. But wait, the way that they, like Leah was saying, the 60 days before, before elections and stuff like that, it's, the timing's kind of weird. So I'm not quite, like I said, a big change like this, I think would be more appropriate at a, at an annual town meeting than a fall meeting, but like I said, the timing's kind of weird. So it's like, I guess we would, it wouldn't take effect, like you said, for another whole year or something.
Or I feel like if it were to be at the fall town meeting, just that there would be more public education about it rather than just kind of discussing it as we're sent, you know, officially open meeting, discussing it as we're setting a warrant and not information set, you know, and maybe it doesn't necessarily raise the level of information session. I'm not sure. It seems like a bigger change though to me than just a, an administrative change. It seems like a, a larger change than that.
And I, and I, and I've heard discussions about whether we should have elected or appointed or not like that, but I've never heard, we've never had any kind of real discussion as far as the board or any feelings as to the direction we should go, but. And like I say, I, either way, I'm not quite sure that it's a bad thing or a good thing, but I, I'm not quite sure the best timing to, to make a mo, to make a change like this, whether it would be, would be more appropriate in annual town meeting.
So can I put my motion to place and halt and not place it? And then later on down the road, put it at an annual town meeting?
We could just vote not to place it.
Not to place, yes. I'm, I'm voting not to place this article.
So that was, that would, everybody can say it's been, we can just all say nay?
Right. And, and I will second that and then, and, and in hopes that we'll have a discussion as a board.
Definitely mark it for fall, you know, for ongoing discussion with the town clerk's office as well as the public as a whole, I think.
Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
Through the chair, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I just, I was a little disappointed. I thought that your board had made a decision and hadn't even talked to our office. But I guess that, that wasn't the way that it, it went. But I believe the, the MGL states that even if it was, it would not take effect until the end of the current town clerk's elected, um, three year term. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
Because I'm, my term is up again in 2024. So this is something that we could talk about.
So the timing probably would be better to do it at an annual and then go through that process. So if that's the move we take. Yeah. So yeah, Anita, we have had, we have had no actual discussion regarding this specific article.
And, and I, and I, there are valid, there are valid points to make on both sides, but I just think that it would be a good idea to, to really discuss it before it moves forward.
Okay.
So I think the town is, it's a motion to.
Have a need to come to one. The motion to place is on the table? We can just say no?
To, to not place it.
No, I mean, I withdrew my motion.
So you're, you withdrew.
Not to place.
Yeah, not to place it.
Buckeye.
Nickel's eye.
Galvani.
Wait, Benoit.
Benoit, I.
And can, to me, can you just make a note to follow up, you know, ongoing conversations with town clerk and everyone to consider for.
Yeah, we have for the year, so I don't even rush into it.
No, but if, if we're going to consider it, we might want to put it on our annual meeting.
Right.
Annual meeting.
Right.
So, okay. Article 23, town administrator. To see if the town will vote to A, authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift and/or eminent domain the property located at 307 Main Street Rutland containing 29 acres more or less, identified by assessors as parcel 30-C-2 and classified under the provisions of GL Chapter 61A, which property is subject to the town's right of first refusal for gen, for general municipal purposes and on such terms and conditions as the select board deems appropriate. And B, raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of money for the purpose of funding said acquisition and costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow all or a portion of said sum under general law, Chapter 44, Sections 7 or 8 and/or other, any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing acquisition or take any action in relation thereto.
I'm going to make a motion to place.
Second.
Discussion.
Do I give the location of where this piece of property is?
Is 307 Main Street.
I mean, you've got people watching.
Okay, let's go. I know, moving along, up through the chair. Yeah, this property is located 307 Main Street in Rutland. It is under chapter or in chapter. I was approached by this a couple of months ago, saying that an opportunity may arise for this piece of property, and it has. Initial conversations were for a certain. Initial conversations were for a certain amount, for, again, a sort of size parcel, but there is already an offer on the table from a contractor for eight hundred thousand dollars for nineteen, fifteen acres at three oh seven Main Street, for which there is a habitable dwelling and a barn that I thought would be a good investment for the town because it could be used for a variety of reasons, and we certainly don't have to go into the particulars, but just to put in a couple, if we were to put a dispatch center up there, it would be, we could build a building for free. It's a habitable buil, habitable building, like I said, we could, we could put a senior center up there. A lot of things we could do. Structure's sound, I have not inspected the inside, I'd not have gone in to any dwelling, any, uh, building on the property, but I thought it was a good deal, you also have an opportunity for the possibility of ball fields out back, soccer fields. So the offer, like I say, is on the table, I have talked to Rebecca about this, and we are in a good position to borrow. So I thought that this would be good, and I was looking to place this as an article, obviously for town meeting floor, for, to secure the funds if, if the deal were to pan out. So Rebecca, as far as the borrowing goes, if you could.
Right, so if we, if we, what is this, this is doing is authorizing us to borrow the funds. If, for some reason, the deal falls through and we don't want to borrow the eight hundred thousand or the cost goes up and it's something that's out of reach of the town, this is just authorizing borrow, we're not going to run out and go and borrow the funds. If it falls through, we can rescind the article and no harm, no foul. But it, this is a placeholder, and it allows us to take advantage of our sixty-one A right to write a first refusal or however, whatever the word is. And it, it gives us a, a, a way to possibly take some action on acquiring a piece of property that could be of beneficial use to the town.
If I may, through the chair. The owner, the property owner, really does not prefer this to go to a contractor, does not want more. House is built, if you were, does not want it subdivided, they prefer to go to the town, but obviously we have to wait, we have to look at the offer on the table, we have to decide. The board of assessors have, have informed us that it would be a good idea to get it appraised, to see what it's actually worth, and then we could take it from there. There's no certified mail sent to, to my office or your office yet that this offer is on the table, but everybody's seen the package, there is an offer on the table for eight hundred thousand dollars.
So through the chair, so is this debt excluded, or is it going to be?
No, no, so that, that's, we, we weren't going to do it as a debt exclusion because the Rutland Heights sale to HCH is going through. So if we, is going through. So if, if that, those funds come in, we could, the timing.
We just shift the allocations.
Exactly, we could do a temporary borrowing for the funds to acquire this property, use the funds that come in from this, the HCH sale and offset.
So the plan is it wouldn't have an effect on the tax base of taxes?
Correct.
And because we can't pay off, once we get the HCH income in, we can't go out and pay off that debt.
Right, it'll, we, we could do a temporary borrowing for like a year. As long as we pay it off, like, like I borrow for December payoff, right, December twenty-four, so we'd have next year's free cash, which would have the, the sale of the HCH property in it and allocate that free cash to pay off that, that bond, and we're done, so.
Has the agricultural commission and the planning board seen it?
The offer, the offer is not live yet, the clock is not on this whole property. Correct, the sixty-one A right of first refusal is not official yet.
It's a placeholder so we don't lose an opportunity that.
That's a nice piece of practice right there.
Joe, you, you had your.
I, I did, I'm just, and maybe Becky answered it, I'm not sure. I'm just confused about the mechanics of, to authorize to borrow is one thing, but to be able to pay what you borrow is a whole nother thing? So I'm, I'm not really following where the funds, if, if we were to borrow, whether it be temporary or otherwise, where the funds would be coming from to pay the debt.
The, if the debt is, so we're borrowing it, I would have to add it to my debt, my debt schedule, okay.
And that's my point, so that's, that's a raise and appropriate item in the budget that isn't funded. So that's why I'm worried, I'm concerned about the mechanics of how the bill would be paid when, when the bond comes due, but then when that debt payment comes due, because it's not in your raise and appropriate line item right now, right?
Right, so it would be in my debt schedule, or we could do an article.
So this wouldn't cover it all?
Similar to what we're doing right now, so similar to what we're doing right now, saying transfer from free cash to pay the debt service for.
So this article doesn't do that, though?
Correct.
So.
This is just authorizing me to borrow if the whole plan comes to fruition. If it doesn't come to fruition, I don't borrow the number of money and we don't do anything.
So I, I guess I would just be concerned that we're authorizing a borrowing without an authorized solid way to pay it. That's, that's what I'd be concerned about.
The Rutland Heights property, how, how much, do we still owe money on that?
We have permanently financed that, there's, um, there's, we have a two-year bond for one sixty-five and one sixty-four, sorry, about three hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand that we're paying. It's permanently, permanently financed, and it'll be paid off. I just made one payment, actually November first, I'll make another payment November first of next year, and it's completely paid off.
And how much money is the sale of the property up there going to be to the town? One point six?
No, one point three two.
One point three two.
It's one point six two five million, I believe. So we can, so we could pay that money that we owe on the property off, and it's still about, there would be some funds available. One point three minus commission, yeah, roughly. I guess you got to give some consideration to, we just heard a litany of things that need to be fixed on our town buildings and everything else, I mean.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Is there some money going to be put aside for that to?
There is a recording problem, can you please suspend for two minutes?
Suspending the meeting for two minutes.
Thank you.
So we're unsuspended. You were speaking.
I, I would said, is there some consideration of some, some of those funds to do all these other projects or things that need to be done, that we don't have any money even to do them?
The point, and Joe made the point of we don't maintain anything that we have. Buying new things to just not maintain that does not seem like a very wise choice.
And also not look for additional options, because as a town now of almost ten thousand, there hasn't been a new building in town since I've been here for thirteen, twelve or thirteen years. So when I moved to town, I, the population was nowhere near ten thousand. It's grown exponentially in that decade that I've been here. So we, I think that to Tommy's point, we, their town, I think we owe it to town to have a conversation as to the priorities of where those funds go. And also, I think that this is potentially an opportunity that fills a lot of those boxes that we've heard need to be filled through master plan, through open space, through the town center study and economic development and everything. So I think that it's a both and. I, I mean, I.
I, I agree, and I think I'd like to add that, to your point as well, we can throw millions, whatever we have, toward these buildings, get them where they need to be, but if we don't have any continuation plan, it's going to be the same situation in X amount of years, and we're going to be looking for another windfall of income because we were able to sell something off. We need to, we need to have a bigger plan, I think, and.
So in seventeen days, do we assume that we're going to get the official notification that the agricultural commission, the planning board, and I think there's one other board that has to look at this to approve it?
Conservation.
Conservation, I see. We got seventeen days, let's just say seventeen days left to get all this done. So the clock has to start, and then everyone has to meet.
But I think.
Do they have to approve, or do they have to just say that they are interested?
They have interest, they have interest.
And then, and if, if nobody has interest, but the select board has interest, or if the select board has no interest, but AgCom has interest, it, then it's on us to also bring that forward.
Right.
So I don't think it's all, I think it's some.
So I just want to say, I mean, this.
The staff process does not have to start for this article to go through. This is, this is strictly just to see if the town allows to borrow it, because if they won't, then it's a moot point, we can't exercise that.
Right, if this opportunity comes up, we want to be prepared.
And, and I understand that, however, you're going to be sitting in front of the townsfolk who show up to this meeting, and I know the first question I'd ask is, so where do we stand with this? If we just say, well, it's just pie in the sky, they're going to be like, really, why? You know what I'm saying? Because it's, 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 right now, it's, we think we might get this, we think it might be this.
But we also say that if we don't show interest, we know we won't get this, and we know we probably won't have an opportunity like this in the future, this is another big parcel on Main Street. And how many more opportunities are we going to have to purchase a property like this?
And I'm in agreement.
So we're just going to say, we're just making a commitment to pursue the purchase of this property to secure it for the town. There's no guarantee that we're going to get it, but there is a guarantee if we don't do this, that we're not going to.
Is there going to be a dollar amount here to tell the people that it won't go above a certain amount?
Well, then I.
Because if we're executing their ability to borrow, me as a taxpayer, I would want to know how much we can borrow, or is it just going to be whatever?
We would have to have a vote by town to, to, for a specific dollar amount, right? We can't just say you can go borrow money without specifying a dollar amount. So they will never go through without the town.
Could you say they appraise value?
But can we, we are not, I think we are not in a position in this meeting because it is a negotiation that we're possibly having, so how can we do this? Because we don't want to put our cards on the table in a, in a sa, in a real estate sale. I mean, I may be wrong, but this is me.
So we're basically saying that permission to, to negotiate the purchase of this property, but I don't think we are committing a, a dollar amount at this point, right?
This is right to borrow.
I'd have to ask legal on that, because whether we have to give a specific amount that we're going to borrow, I would.
I, I, I do believe we need to get a vote to borrow, and it would have to be a specific amount.
Yeah.
You can't just say you can go.
Right.
But then also, does it need to go to ballot? That's a ballot question, only if we actually.
Only if it's dead excluded.
Okay.
Only if we're going to dead exclude the, the funds.
Right.
And because the plan is, is, is to do a one, a one-year ban and then allocate the funds from free cash to pay it on.
Carol, if I may, I don't know if this is helpful at all, but this particular article was written by town council.
Yes.
And in the notes that Attorney Jenkins gave me, and he gave me notes on specific ones, he, he did not say that this had to specify a dollar amount. I don't know that that is the case, but he did give me notes on everything and wrote this, so they have seen it.
But was he told that this wasn't an official?
Yes, he was given all that information.
So I, I still think that we can say you can go and borrow, but I think when we have an amount, that amount has to be approved by the town.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think it's almost a two-step thing, like go ahead, you can, you can pursue borrowing temporarily, but the, the town's still going to have to come back and vote on that actual amount.
So then are we looking at a potential second town meeting at the holidays? I mean, that, this would have to happen fairly quickly, right? I mean, if.
That's, that, we need the opinion.
Right.
I, I think we need the opinion whether we have to put the amount in the motion or not.
Well, this is another one we can get clarified hopefully by Tuesday, maybe, to, to be specific on whether we need a dollar amount, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
But like I said, I mean, I mean, I know for sure that if we don't do this, then we're going to be looking at what we saw around Main Street already till last bar, and we're going to look at fifty-five and older condo complex, something like that, taking over that spot.
And like I said, I think it fits in well with a lot of the master plan, planning, the location and everything is.
And like Gary said, I mean, it's potential for recreational areas and things like that, and there's not much left, so, you know, people say they're talking about having those opportunities, then this is one that we have, and if we don't pursue it, then so we lose that opportunity.
By count, through the chairs, just a couple, just a couple more points I'd like to mention, is it does border the school property, and I know that the landowners, property owners prefer that it would go to the town and not a contractor, so just a couple of things to say.
I, I honestly, I think you headed in the right direction, because I, I don't know what this article would accomplish, because I think no matter what you do, you'd have to come back to another town meeting to make it work anyhow. You know, I, I think there's provisions, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think there's provisions regarding timing of how sixty-one A goes to allow the town to take the necessary steps through all its town procedures that once a deal is struck, to go to town meeting and appropriate the funding, whether it's going to be borrowed or paid outright or whatever the case might be. This, I don't know what this accomplishes for you, because you can authorize to borrow, but if you can't pay it, it, it's kind of a useless authorization.
Well, I mean, what, I mean, the town council looked at it, so they must think that it at least gives us the ability, it gives us the ability to negotiate, I believe.
I don't know that you need the ability to negotiate through a town vote, but that's, again, it's a legal question. I, I'm strictly talking about the financial aspect of paying.
Well, because if they reviewed it, why wouldn't they review it and say this doesn't do anything?
Well, no, this says raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds and/or borrow some of money.
Right.
So it, it's actually saying raise and appropriate as well.
It does.
And transfer from available funds and to borrow, so this gives you the right to do all of those things.
But the motion would be one. You, you can't, you can't put the motion on the floor to do all three. The motion would have to be one of those actions, and there needs to be a resource of funding to move forward with the one that's chosen, whether it's raise and appropriate, take from free cash, or to do some other, you know, stabilization, whatever the case might be.
So the plan was to borrow those funds?
And what funds?
That's what the motion would say, to borrow.
Right, but we don't know what the funds would be.
The amount, you mean?
Yeah. Is it a dollar or is it a million? I mean.
Well, right now, they have an offer eight hundred thousand.
They don't have an official offer, because there was no official write, in writing given. So it's nothing official.
No, but before they can come to the town and say they have it for sale, they have to have a sales and purchase agreement written up by somebody before it comes to the town.
And I understand that, and all I'm saying is, is at this point, the town has not officially been given that.
Right.
So that's the thing, so the clock hasn't started, and we don't know where we're going to be.
I will say, we know that the clock for sixty-one A is very quick, the turnaround is like thirty days or forty-five, I mean, it's, it's really.
A hundred and forty days.
It's a hundred and twenty days.
It's, oh, sorry, it's a hundred and twenty days to, to notice, to move forward, but then that triggers all the additional things also, so it's a quick, it is a very quick turnaround, and knowing that we're coming into the holidays to try to schedule an additional town meeting to approve or whatever, is just.
You're going to have to do it anyway, Leah, you're going to have to do it anyway.
Right. I was going to say, because, just because we authorize you to borrow, we're not giving you the total amount to borrow. Personally, I think you're going to have a hard time getting this to pass on the floor, because I can see several individuals that show up to these meetings asking how much it's going to be, and we're going to say, oh, we don't know yet. That's kind of, I mean, from how it's written and how you guys just stated it to me, it's like the town is giving you a blank check, and that's not truly the case.
But that is a bona fide offer that's on the table to the property owner of eight hundred thousand.
But we haven't officially been given it.
Officially, it has not been given, so you're right.
Right, so until it's official, it doesn't mean anything.
It is a bona fide offer that's on the table with deposit, so.
But as soon as we get it, that triggers a hundred and twenty days.
I get it.
So it sounds like the board is conceptually in favor but has additional questions, leave, leave, so maybe we hold this one also until our Tuesday meeting? No, you want to place it?
No, I'm not going to hold it, I want it placed.
Do we come up with an arbitrary figure?
We can come up with it, when we give them their answers.
Not completely arbitrary, but.
Not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, not to exceed two thousand, you know, whatever, stick a number in there.
You could do that, not to exceed?
Right.
I, I would ask that.
Because if we play around, wait another six months. Because if we play around, wait another six months, that piece of property is going to be.
In our rearview mirror.
Yep.
So, then the only other thing would be is, shouldn't we put that up on the town website for a calculator so people know how much it's going to add to their tax bill?
It's not, though, it's not a debt exclusion.
If we allocate free cash at the next town meeting, it's not going to go on anybody's tax rate.
That's a big if, though.
If the HCH money comes in.
But the town has to vote.
The town has to prove that.
That it goes that way. We don't get to decide that. That's from the taxpayers have to do that. So, we still have to, I would think that we would want to be transparent and say, we have a potential that this might work this way. However, this is what it will add to your tax bill.
Well, you could say that that's what the impact would have on the tax base, but the intent is the town hopes to pay it through.
Proceeds.
Proceeds.
Yeah, and I would just say that, you know, we're going to be putting that next year.
Right.
So, to Tommy's point, they could say, fine, this is only this much on my taxes, and we get to spend the entire money on everything that you talked about. I mean, it could go that way, and we could all walk away from there going, wow.
Right. So, it doesn't hurt to say what the impact would be, but the intent is to pay it off through a funding.
I agree. This sounds good. All right. So, how do we need to reword this not to exceed? Where do we stick it in?
We're not doing amounts right now, anyway.
That would be in the motion.
It would be in the motion. So, we don't have to do it now.
All right. So, end of discussion, yes?
Yes.
Vote.
Black eye. Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Weyman eye.
Benoit eye. 26. To see if town, if the town will vote to approve the dedication of the intersection of Glenwood and Campbell Street as the Fred and Shirley Warren Square, or take any action in relation thereto. Motion to place.
Second with explanation that this was a citizen petition that was kind of misstepped, so the board agreed to place. So, I mean, we say we're sponsoring it, and I mean, we're not.
It was going to be a citizen's petition if we did not.
You wanted to say it was going to be a citizen's petition?
Well, I just want to clarify because we don't typically just do this, I would think. I think we're doing this because it was brought to our attention, every request, the citizen petition. I don't know, unless the board.
It needs to go to town regardless of how it's done, either citizen petition or by the Select Board. We offered to do it as a Select Board for this because there was a lot of discussion and not clarity on a policy which is being rewritten, so a process is being written, so.
So, I mean, I second for placing it. I just was for clarification purposes.
So, is there any further discussion? Yeah.
Nichols eye.
Galvin eye.
Weyman eye.
And Benoit eye. Article 27, Planning Board, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding to Article 3, Use Regulations, Subsection 10A, Chapter 2, special permit uses for VC districts, Village Center districts, you might want to spell that out, non-residential uses, a new principal category H, automobile sales and repair and motorcycle sales and repair is set forth in a handout titled, "November 7, 2022, Special Town Meeting, Zoning Bylaw, Village Center Uses, Article 17." Also, file with town clerk or take any action in relation thereto. Yes, sir? No people? Place it?
Yep. Second.
Discussion.
Pardon? Do you have a quick question, if I could?
Yes.
So, this originated as a citizen's petition. Town meeting didn't vote it, it was referred to the Planning Board. We would like to see this pass and succeed. I do notice that it was originally Article 17, now it's Article 27. I'm just wondering if the board has any thoughts about the placement of a zoning article and whether this is a good place for it, whether it would be detrimental to its chances of success, or any thoughts on that? Obviously, whatever you folks end up placing it is fine.
Placing makes no difference. I don't consider it to make any difference.
The only thing would be who's left in the room. But that's going to be that way, Frank.
They might be better off to wait and make sure there's nobody's left in the room. Really.
Any further discussion?
Black eye. Nichols eye.
Galvin.
Weyman eye.
Benoit eye. And 28 is a citizen's petition, which we have no choice but to place, so.
Motion to place and no discussion and whatever.
Second. Somebody can second?
Weyman.
Black eye. Nichols eye.
Galvin.
Weyman.
And Benoit eye.
Can I just thank Planning Board, Zoning Bylaw Subcommittee, because I know they've done a ton of work on those zoning articles that got referred back to them. So, thank you, Dave, and thank you to the bylaw subcommittee.
I appreciate the help. Pass that on to the committee.
Thank you, and motion to return. Nichols eye.
Pardon?
Second.
That's it?
Nichols eye.
Black eye.
Tommy.
Benoit eye. Thank you. Good night.
Motion to return.
Oh, motion to return.
Second.
Aye. Go.